The Budge allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you hear us Glenn?
Yes, I can.
How are you recuperating?
Every day is a bit better here doing fine.
Alright, we'll take that as it is. If you get sick of us or tired, just let us know and we'll shut you off. Okay, amendments to the agenda. Oh, I have none today. Alright. Appointments, obviously our first appointment is the Rescue Squad. They are not going to come today.
Yes, the Rescue Squad, I did talk to them. Was- Wiskowski? I hope I got that right. And she said they won't be here. I did get a call saying they would be here on the 30th if we rescheduled.
Okay, let's get them in here.
Yep.
For sure. So they're rescheduled to the 30th?
Yes.
Alright, solar energy purchase. Hi. This is Tom Hand.
Hi Tom. So he spent quite a good time on the contract as I think you probably seen. Wanted to come back and offer to answer any remaining questions. Do you have other way you want to go about having to do that as well?
Oh, direct question, anybody, anybody got questions that we were talking earlier on? A couple of things. It looks, the first question I have is it looks like the savings to the town is about $3,500 a year. Does that figure? How, how is that, it's really not guaranteed though, correct? I mean, it's, it's subject to the credits that the state, that the legislature allows for? Is that, is that the way I understand it?
Kind of. So what you're doing is you are agreeing to buy the credits regenerated and fix the discount. So the value of that credit may change, go up or down because it's based on power rates, GMP power rates. But your percentage savings is the same whether it goes up or goes down.
So what is the percentage?
In here, I believe it's 5%.
5%?
Yes. And that was, as we discussed previously, most of our customers are doing long-term agreement at 7.5%. This was sort of a custom creation to provide flexibility in the event of a loss.
So this is, uh... And the hydro, if, if in fact we wanted out, we could get out at, at...
180 days.
Six, six months.
Yeah, you provide notice that you're going ahead with the hydro project and then six months later.
Is that the only way we go if we're going hydro?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try it in for 25 years if you don't provide. I have a question. Section 7. It says that the provider will authorize controlled solar bill credits of allocation or will in the future. That means you don't even want them yet? You don't even have the control of your allocation?
I can't allocate something that doesn't exist, right? So we don't build a project until we know how we have customers. We have permits for five of the seven projects we're building this year. We got one last, last Friday. We've got a project under construction right now, Newmont Slate. Another one's going to start in Beddington four weeks after that. We're going to move up the project in bolt before example that. So we build our projects in the summer, obviously adopted you guys since the winter time. So... Again, the way the allocation works is if we turn the project out, Green Mountain Power says where you want us to send these credits. Then provide them a list. It's tied to meter number on the project and the meter numbers for your accounts. So the allocation, we're from up, we're saying in this contract, the accounts we're going to allocate. I can't go to Green Mountain Power and actually give them the allocation until I have a meter number for my own project and it's installed. So that's the reason for that allocation. It's just simply the time of year. We get our permits and we get our customers, then we build projects.
This, this is a hypothetical and it's really not fair to ask you this, but I'll ask it anyways. Have I ever been any different? You can't build in Fairhaven at this point, is that correct? Because of our, not your, we don't have the capacity?
I hesitate to say can't because I've looked at every situation, but it's extremely difficult. I have looked at some locations in Fairhaven and the distribution grid here operates at 4 kW. Most of the state operates at 12.4. So the amount of amps you can push down that line is the same as anywhere else. Total power, amps times volts. So if you can only do an amp on, this is an example, an amp on one line, you got 4,000 volts, so that's 4,000 watts of power. If you had 12 kW, you have 12,000. So if you can push a third as much power through the lines as it does within all of this.
Well, I asked that question just to get it out there because we're, and to go back to the contract. We, we were offered a contract on our, on our property and I think that the percentage was at the time was, uh... Well, obviously there was town land, so there was a, there was a lease agreement. And there, and I, and I say this hesitantly because you're offering five, but I thought it was 15%.
That doesn't surprise me at all.
Yeah.
I mean, I will say...
The difference is...
We've done projects where if it's the landowner taking the power, then we've got both the value of the land effectively and the savings from the PPA. The other thing is that Green Mountain Power and state level, the value that they're willing to provide for solar is dropping over there. So they've set in motion each July first it drops. So the projects that we have that are building this summer, we started working on 18 months ago. So they went into permitting. Their current value is close to the retail rate. It's about 16 cents. If you put a project in for permitting today, it's 14 cents. So since we put these ones in, it's already dropped two cents because we bumped to two July first.
How would that affect this contract if there's...
It doesn't affect this because we already, those projects are locked in from the year that they went into permitting. We build them now, so that's...
So that's where you get your guarantee is, is that they lock you into a rate?
We have a rate structure from when, based on when you go into the program and when your application is deemed. And so going back, you know, go back to 2016, 2015, back then you got more than 20 cents. So 15% savings back then is very common. As, you know, solar costs have come down some too, but as the program advances, they keep lowering the rates. So there are folks out there definitely have 15% savings because they went in a couple of years ago.
How does this tie in with our purchase policy and our bid? Is it special so you don't have to bid it out? Like it seems like we would bid and ask for competing. Solar company bids, sealed and saying, and I think I asked this last time.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not a lawyer and certainly I'm not a contract, that kind of contract. But I can tell you some of the other folks in the contract, but ARSU are providing credits for all the schools in ARSU. ARSU, Town of Manchester, number of other individual schools. So I don't know exactly what the provision is or how that, we gather that works. None of those folks have had to go through promises or a formal RMP in the way you would hereby...
It would be our internal policies that would dictate that, right?
The only answer I, I can come up with is, this is brand new and we, normally we're dealing with one power company, which is GMP. So we wouldn't have a bid for that. Obviously they're, they're the ones that send the bills because they have the power. Now, we're dealing with something a little, little different, so the question is valid. Is there more than one solar business out there?
Absolutely.
Right.
What I'll tell you now though, because if you go down this road, you'll find it out. It'll take you a long time. This contract, as a standalone contract, is totally unfinancable. What we're giving you, the ability to leave in the event that the hydro...
Exactly, exactly.
It's totally unfinancable. The only reason we can do it is because you would be a portion of a project, but we've got other folks that are signed up for 25 years in our contract. So we can blend it in with our other projects and essentially go back and say, look...
It's not that big a percentage.
It's not, it's not the whole project. We can mitigate this risk as a, as a collection. So that's, that's the reason we're willing is we can put it in with our other, like you can go with ARSU for example. They're in for 25 years, stable energy, not a credit risk. And we can say, look, we've got a contract here, we've got enough time, we go find somebody else that can do it. But within the solar industry, this is not a common construct, not a common structure at all.
I would agree with that statement. It's more, if you pulled that loophole out, then it would be a...
Yeah, then it would be a standard 25-year. And that's what we tried to start to buy that as an option in the event that the hydro doesn't happen. You could tell us that and then you would go to 7.5% savings like all our customers.
That is in here?
Yeah.
I missed that part.
Yeah, so in the event that it's deemed infeasible, you can just revert essentially to that standard. Take your term and savings.
It may have to be rewritten. I don't, I didn't notice that either. That, that's a little, um... That makes it a little better too.
Oh, is that the waiver?
I believe it's, it's as a waiver.
If I need time during the term.
The other one was marked up. I can't find my phone. Adjusted to 92.5.
Yeah, so that's in, uh... 4C. Or another week. Page eight. Right before the notice addresses. They're just, you have it there.
Is that in the Schedule B or?
No, it's on page eight. I think it's a waiver. If at any time during the term of the agreement subscriber provides a credit-based waiver of the right set forth in this section, the hydro project waiver. And starting on the first full billing cycle after receipt of such hydro project waiver, continuing for the remainder of the term, subscription price is set forth in specific conditions. Section 4 of this agreement shall be adjusted to 92.5%. So it's just going back to our standard 25-year, 7.5%.
Glenn, do you have any questions?
Just want to clarify, so other than the bulk termination part of this thing here, if our hydro goes through and we begin, you know, this has to begin, they serve this minute public good. There's six months. Then under item three where it talks about is a re-subscription payment. That's $15,000 or 50% of the subscription savings, whichever is lower.
Right.
Yes.
And that seems pretty straightforward. At the bottom of that, what the last sentence says, the re-subscription payment shall be approved in 60 days if that's the case. Any termination pursuant to section four. Can you explain, that section four, uh... It starts talking about 92.5% of the value of the solar bill credits. How does, how does that tie in?
Uh... Read.
And I guess my question was, I just wanted to make sure that we did that. The, what we would owe is either $15,000 or 50% of the subscription savings. And there just wasn't something else on four or just waiver?
No, to answer your question, there, there isn't anything else. It's possible that that, that reference is incorrect. I think it's just trying to tie it back up to the top here.
Alright, thank you.
Do you have this contract reported by your attorney?
By two attorneys and myself, yes.
Did they have anything?
Uh, this, the contract you have in front of you is, has all of the edits that myself, Bill Blumer and Jim Carroll proposed. Some of it, most of it was just language around ifs and ands and shalls. There was some language about advertising, which MHG was hesitant to remove.
Which one is that?
It's on the very last page. Oh, I'm sorry, the second to last page, seven confidentiality and publicity. Legal thought it would be a good idea to pull most of that out.
Well, listen, it's mostly, it's just mutual saying, we won't talk about you guys without your permission. You won't talk about us without our permission. Obviously, this all ends up in public, public record. We understand that.
But there's not much confidential in this at the end of the day. Because all the numbers are out in the open, the contract's out in the open.
Yeah, so to be honest, we put this in because we view the contract as part of our business. It's part of what we do. It's been a lot of money drafting these things. And so it is absolutely public knowledge. We just don't want to be proactively emailed out or all the other solar companies calling, hey, do you have a copy of that contract? Sure, let me send you a copy in the mail. It's mostly just, don't, don't publicize it. Obviously say something asked for it.
Technically, I think we would have to send, if someone asked for it.
Public knowledge.
Yeah.
If we, if we sign a contract, it's public knowledge.
Or a document.
But yeah.
If the Herald wanted...
Publicly available, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the Herald wanted it, we would have to provide it.
I guess we, we think of it as perhaps as like publicly available versus proactively providing. It's a different thing.
It's not our...
Yeah.
It's attached to those minutes if you want to come in.
Easier for you than us for that.
Absolutely, yeah, it's just me and Pete.
And it makes a lot more sense for you than it does for us. Transparency is what we should be striving to.
In real numbers, what are we looking at?
Thirty-five hundred dollars a year savings over the course of that. We would be paying back four plus years if we got, if we opted out. Right, the $15,000.
Yeah, the break even is with this one.
Four years, you know, 35, whatever that...
It's half of the savings, so you have to save, you have to save $30,000 total. So it's actually...
It's the less, there is no time period which you don't save.
Right. Right, but I'm just... I'm thinking if, if we do opt out...
The buyout is up to 15.
Yeah. If we do opt out, it's going to cost us more than what we're saving. Well, it's four years' worth of the savings.
No, no, you're saying it's not going to...
It can never be more, it can never be more than half of what you've saved. It's the lesser of half of what you've saved or 15,000.
Not more than 15.
Yeah, the lower.
It will never be more than 15,000.
Resubscription payment shall be the lesser of 15,000 or 50% of the savings today. So if you've only saved 10,000, it's 5,000. If you got up to 30, then it could be 15.
I didn't, I didn't read that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not meant to be punitive. It's, we're just trying to cover costs for us having to go back out and find somebody else and just to...
And potentially give them, have to give them a better deal. Because the rates are going to change.
And really it's, you know, if you think about a better deal over a long period of time, this amount doesn't cover that. It's really just about our effort and time to go out and find somebody. Same, same reason for the six-month dollars. We just want to have some advantage for money. Because if you guys go away six months and you haven't found somebody, that money just goes boof. We don't have someone to send the credits to. GMP won't pull up for us. They're gone. So we bear all methods. We bear all the risk of finding somebody new. We bear the risk of half, half of savings.
Yeah, that was the only thing I didn't love. That and I was nervous about the bid spec. Whether the bid falls.
So, yeah, I did look it up. The board can choose to go with single source. I did look to try to find somebody that was similar.
But he addressed it. There isn't a similar contract.
There, there's nothing. I looked at the state too for some kind of list of something and it's, it's just not there. We can definitely release an RFP though, if the board wants.
No one has given us the, I mean, we've talked to a couple of attorneys, at least one other one. And they, they were like all or nothing. Really more than definitely what you're saying. Which is true.
Be ninefold because it's for 10 years. You've never done a contract like this.
I appreciate that.
Be surprised how many times somebody has said that to us.
When, when do you need to know? Do you need this tonight? What's the, you want it?
We've got, we've got...
January.
Yeah, we've got seven projects, five of them are full, so... And that seventh one, we got the CPG on Friday, so we have to get tried. So from a fullness perspective of the projects, like pretty much five out of six, one element is coming in, so...
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, if there, if there's, I guess I would turn it back and say, if you need another two weeks to talk about it or something, fine. But if it's just waiting for the sake of waiting, then I don't think we're very interested in what you do in the contract after.
I, I would appreciate the, the two weeks. I would like us, frankly, it's a contract. We have the right to go to executive session and bat it around and see if we can, if there's wiggle room or whatever. But make sure that we're all on the same page before we, we do it. That would be, that would be great. I mean, we're pushing it back. We've done this several times. I understand and I, and I appreciate the, the, extraordinary measures you've done for us. I appreciate that a lot because the, the water, the hydro plant is near and dear to my ear.
Yeah, and we don't begrudge you taking time to go, to go talk about it. I guess we just ask that you give us consideration and, and make a decision in a reasonable amount of time.
Can we commit to that 30th? I think so. My feeling is, where this is written, the project isn't built. It's like buying into a timeshare that's not built yet. Or whether? I don't know. Well, maybe, but that project's going to be built. He, it's all permitted. I would imagine your financing is part of your permit.
It's not, but...
You're shovel ready.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're down to Newmont Slate, like that project under construction right now. We've got steel like literally in the ground right now and concrete is going to do that. And we're going to be four weeks behind on the site if we're going to be done with the project. So we're gone.
It's really whether you think $3,500 a year is worth locking in.
They're locking him 25 years or something. Once again, this is probably... Starting with fire hearing me for at least another week.
Okay.
Let's talk about that and let's, let's get back to you. And we will, we will make a decision on the, on the 30th, one way or the other. I mean, everything's in front of us. We just have to come to a conclusion. Probably what, what will be the 30th is, sign a contract or not. But you'll know that before you...
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Do I have anything else?
Any other questions, Glenn? Sorry, I didn't...
I can't see, can't see his hand. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Now that we're going backwards a little bit in the approval of minutes. July 2nd, is the first one?
Solmo has presented.
Second. Thank you. additions, deletions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Uh, July 5th.
Motion has written.
Second. All those? deletions, additions, corrections. The only thing I would say is that we had two meetings.
Our corrections on the next meeting.
We had, yeah, we had to correct the tax rate. So that's why there are two meetings, the second and the fifth.
But this, the minutes of these meetings are accurate. What happened that night at the meeting.
That's right. So July 5th, all those in favor? Thank you.
Is he going to vote with him or?
Yes, he is. So far he's been, he's been with the majority. And now we'll go back to July 2nd.
July 9th.
July 9th, I'm sorry, I got...
Solmo has presented.
Additions, second, additions, deletions, corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that takes care of those guys. Thank you. Five minutes for public comment.
Go ahead.
I'll try with this. Most of you know me. My name's Robert Sterling. I'm here as a taxpayer in Town of Fairhaven. I'm also here as an EMT, recently certified. Full disclosure, I'm a full-time state game worker and I've been working in this town for 20, almost 23 years, so you all know me. The reason that I'm here, this is also Candace Trevelyan.
Oh, I'm a paramedic.
A paramedic, but also a taxpayer in town. The reason we're here is reference to Fairhaven Rescue Squad. We're not blind to what's going on, of the fact that we have not had coverage. Personally, I have been involved in at least five situations, one of which where I had to wait 40 minutes for an ambulance with a subject who I had to constantly keep calm and keep control of, or if I could have gotten into an ambulance, got to this person here. I don't normally come to these things, but at the point where I'm waiting to see for enough, where I'm not going to wait for a police officer to die, a member of the public, or my wife, or my daughter to die because there's not coverage. And for me to come here today, I'm very, very concerned. So I try to write this down to keep it controlled. There is no coverage for the month of July. I've heard all these things. Don't worry, there's things up and coming. But that's fine. Why do we not have a board member that we select, or have chosen, appointed, have enough to come here to a meeting and not send text messages saying good things are happening to other people? I want a board member to show up at this meeting when it's on the agenda and tell me good things are happening, we're moving forward. Because my life is on the line as well as my child, my children's. So one, I have a vote of no confidence on a board that can't show up for this. I also believe there's, and we're requesting mutual aid in their violation of state contracts and state orders, which Candace has documentation of, where mutual aid says they'll cover when... where mutual aid says they'll cover when they're unresponsive. Fairhaven Rescue requires by Vermont regulations to have coverage twenty-four hours a day.
Three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Exactly. We don't have that.
And that's not what mutual aid is made for. Mutual aid is.
That's the condition of their license.
Mutual aid is made for a condition above and beyond like what happened on Sunday. I'm sure you guys are pretty aware, that's a mutual aid. And then it includes hires on that. My husband, I don't work for this ambulance service. I'm not here and they need help with the ambulance service that I work for. I'm here on behalf of, because I am scared as to what's going to happen to any one of our families anytime soon.
I agree with you on that.
And it's a little, little too late, I think, at this point, as a town, we need to bind together. Because every single, and I'm an educator. I just recently taught this class and was able to provide here in Fairhaven Rescue. When I teach the district classes for EMT programs, every single one of my students leaves that and is bonded to some ambulance service within District Ten. Vermont's broken up into thirteen districts or number ten. That encompasses, um, Fairhaven Rescue as well. And I got them five people. And many of them are not there anymore and that's.
To go, to go with that, I'm gonna have to jump on you. We have the timeframe. I've talked to many of those folks, the reason that they're not here. Uh, there was a letter that was sent out. Part of my beef is, I'm a taxpayer, I have an address, I have a tax bill that showed up. No letter has been sent to me. I strongly support the rescue squad and did not hesitate to double funding. I'd like to know where that money's going if it's not gonna be protecting my family. I would pay more than that per ambulance. In fact, I would support the police department to save my family in a bad situation and an ambulance squad before, before a paved road.
What's that?
That's the letter from the rescue squad.
Malcolm, that's not at my house yet. That's my point. Taxpayers in this town are wanting to know.
How about the other ambulance services, did they go and find out?
I have no knowledge of that.
The taxpayers would like to know why, when they, they get a call at West Haven, at Benson, at Fairhaven, that they have, the last two weeks, seen nothing but Randville, Skeensboro, or Holby. They need to know and they haven't received it. When I speak to the folks that have chosen not to be, not to continue employment with Fairhaven Rescue, the letter that went out said morale. So what is morale? Has anyone seen that building recently? We put money, no money's been put into that building. The building is, where their working conditions are, is terrible. They increase pay. Pay doesn't mean anything if you don't have leadership. I believe that the board's job, I haven't read it, so if I'm wrong, I could be wrong. Um, the board's job is to oversee the rescue squad and assure that they're paying their bills properly, they're receiving funding properly, they're being managed properly, and I would say to hire a manager to do that. My understanding is they may have hired somebody. I do have concerns with board members and board members' family handling billing. To the best of my knowledge, many of the biggest, uh, rescue squads in the state of Vermont have a private organization that handles billing. I don't know if you've ever tried to do any of that insurance billing, but God bless anyone who figured that out. And I believe that a board should be hiring somebody out to do the billing and they should be hiring somebody out to be the manager. A good manager will have good leadership. They'll have EMTs, EMRs, paramedics wanting to work for them. If they're enjoying where they're working, you know what? If they're able to go to the manager and say, we need a new toilet and we'll install it, you're gonna get back to having rescuers like you have firefighters who are willing to paint the place and are willing to put carpet in as long as the rescue squad provides it. Okay, that's morale and that's leadership. Now I know they're claiming they're hiring somebody and that's good. But they then need to hire that person and give that person the ability and the control. Because as soon as they start to micromanage and tell them what they have to do, you're gonna lose that leader and that leader isn't gonna have discretion to what he's doing. That leader needs to be successful in what they are doing, to know paramedic medicine and things at a level that I don't know. And a good leader knows how to hire somebody or get somebody in that knows what they don't. I don't believe the board has done that. I believe the Fair, Fairhaven Rescue Squad have the best rescue squad in the state by and through the veterinarian Fairhaven. And I'd like to see that happen again. Cause I don't wanna see Fairhaven go away. Or if their time is done, they need to go. Because there needs to be coverage. The taxpayers are spending, what do we double up to?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand.
Twenty dollars per capita.
And, and do you go along with what?
Don't argue that. I don't argue that. As long as I know that when my wife calls for an ambulance, that my little girl has smacked her head, that one's gonna be there. That's what I care about. From an officer's safety, law enforcement perspective, I've been on calls dealing with people that need help. And if I can't get them into an ambulance, they're gonna get teased. And that's not gonna help them, but we're into a life and death situation for me. But when I convince them in a five-minute period of time, will you go to an ambulance and get help? Yes, I will. Cool, we got forty minutes, Middlebury should be here.
Yeah, I, I think that there, there should be a distinction about which board you're talking about.
Not you guys. I'm talking about the board that we've appointed, somebody.
Right.
The direct part of directors.
I, I have to agree to a hundred percent because this has been going on. This didn't just happen yesterday.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Don't, don't you think that there should be an audit?
I feel the board should have been involved a long time ago. The board.
Meaning you.
No, no, for the rescue squad itself. They should have been more active a long time ago. We, we have gotten no response, no rec, no, uh, anything from them. You know, I mean, we didn't know this was happening till we got a letter.
How, how do you guys appoint Judy Waskowski as your representative? She's been there as long as I, I went to.
I don't believe.
Paramedic in two thousand and two and.
I, I have no recollection of any.
We don't, we don't appoint them.
Where do they, where do they come from?
So, cause she represents.
Well, it's a.
We thought you appointed.
Yeah, and, and at, at one point, many moons ago, many years ago, we did. But I think, I think what happened when they became a private organization, they, they have got their own board together.
So I submit to you that you guys should look to see at that because the understanding is she represents the town of Fairhaven. Lynn LaRocque represent represents the town of Benson and then there's a few others.
Our request was, can we look at different board members so that we get leadership in there?
Could you guys look at that and see if?
We have, yes, we, I don't, we haven't.
He used to be somebody that's knowledgeable in the, I would be happy to leave you the legislative rules and regulations of an ambulance service and the line.
I have, the only time, the only time we've heard.
Yeah, please do.
From the rescue squad, is when they come in and ask for more money.
And that's.
And a lot.
And I, I do have to say, I feel bad as a paramedic that I just moved back to this town. And I feel bad that I, uh, don't serve them, that I have other commitments. And I mean, I work for another ambulance service, part-time Brandon, and they tend to, they're, they're a volunteer squad. They don't have any problems.
I will tell you, I'm a new EMT and I am signing up to work as much, you know, I wanna be a dad too. It's really hard to have a full-time job and be a dad and also do this. But I'm looking at is when I retire, where am I gonna work in three to four days? And to be honest, I'm leaning towards regional simply for the security and the fact that they're an organization. I live how far from the, from the rescue.
They are.
I would be more than happy, I know these people, I have covered this area for twenty-two years. I actually truly care about the folks in this district and I want them to have the best. It tugs at my park when I'm working on a nine-year-old little girl and I don't have a representative, I don't have an ambulance for my own town here again. And that was very difficult Saturday.
And it right there.
Sunday.
Well, the.
And I, I apologize because I thought you folks had trouble.
No, here's, here's, just to the scenario where we are at, yeah. I guess I'm playing defense, but, but, um, not really. When we were doing the budget, when we were doing the budget last winter, the rescue squad came in and said they were having a little trouble.
But they didn't. They, they sent a note, they said they needed more money.
They needed more money.
We had the request that they come in and explain it.
Yes.
They weren't gonna come in and.
No, they were just gonna ask for money.
Boy, if I needed a little few extra dollars and I finally gave it to me, they probably come in and.
Yeah, well, they, they did. And, but they, it was mostly just finances or finances, everything cost more money, that kind of thing. They're really, we didn't get the, the, the feel of, of that there was a problem, that, that kind of large problem. You could tell, I mean, the difference between Fairhaven, Fairhaven pays twelve dollars an hour for their EMT, regional pays sixteen, that's a big difference. And that, that had to be a, had to be a draw, you know, it had to be some sort of a, a problem for them. But we didn't know anything until we got this letter. And the first thing we did is asked the board members to come in. And assuming, I didn't know they weren't coming in until, well, until I came in this afternoon and went, well, that's not good. I really kind of expected a lot more people here.
What? I, I understand that I've read and, and I only saw the letter from, from actually combatants and folks provided to me. I understand they put the money from the folks that have, uh, signed up and down.
Subscriptions?
Yes.
Subscriptions.
Yes, I believe they put the subscriptions in a bank account somewhere to keep them safe. What happens to our fifty now?
I think we are.
Because if it's not gonna go to that rescue squad, let's give it a little more money to pull the grand bill to make it motivated.
It hasn't gone anywhere yet.
So we still hold it.
Right. While you were talking, while you were talking, I was looking to make sure it didn't, that we didn't send the first order.
And so we know.
We're, we're doing, we're, well, we did.
We're checking legal.
We did do some, uh, some due diligence on that and then we've talked to BLCT and at this point, it sounds like we can, the way I read that. Um, that we can hold it. It makes no sense to send it to an organization that isn't doing anything.
Ultimately, we all have one goal. We're all on the same page.
July twenty-third at four-thirty PM, they're having a meeting down there.
My problem is that we don't have any coverage now. Because I'm, you know, I'm right beside you. I mean, I know how long.
You're welcome to call. I will come if I'm asked.
I took them to come one time and my wife got hurt. You know, and we're around the corner from it. And it's, it seems like the service is making, it keeps smacking off more and more and more. And now we have nothing. And I'm, I'm really nervous about that.
And if a strain on EMS system has a hole.
Well, you know, I wanna bring it up. What is this, what kind of a strain is this putting on Holby, Ramble and Quiero?
Each of these agencies are in trouble.
Rudden's coming just as much.
Regional.
I mean, I cannot speak for the service I work for, but I can speak as an educated professional here going, we're coming just as much.
And you know what my feelings are right now? What happens when August gets here? Are we gonna get another letter that they're closing down for August soon?
Well, I, I'd like to see what we can do for coverage now. I would like to see who we can get. Either Polley or Whitehall, one of them. If we can get them in the time to us to see if they could provide us coverage.
I think you guys also need to look globally at the nation. This is not just a rescue and rescue, you know? I feel like we're kinda, we are picking on them because that's their town. And I don't wanna see them fold because there's some really good people on that squad that they need to that part of the department as well. But if you look nationally, we have a problem everywhere. Holby's not immune to it. We go mutually for Rudden's and Holby just as much. Skeensboro covers and it's just, you, you have one pot that we're pulling from all EMS providers trying to go everywhere. So you have some of us that have been doing it twenty years and it's, I call it, it's a golden session with, we're a little bit everywhere.
But Fairhaven has some good people.
That's what.
What it comes down to is leadership and morale. You know, they, they talk about leadership, what do we wanna do? I, I cannot get any closer to that rescue base. I don't wanna be a part of it right now. And I'm bringing to work for regional one or two days a month so that I can get better as EMT. The reason I don't wanna do that is I don't wanna sign onto an organization that doesn't have their stuff together. And we've got new young EMTs that are learning and they're saying, they were learning from some good people in Fairhaven. So we've gotta have leadership to be able to, the board has to be able to go in there and say, we're gonna hire a manager and allow that manager to be a leader and stop micromanaging them and allow that manager to then beef up morale and encourage folks to want to work for Fairhaven. Those folks are here, we live here. But I, I don't, you know, if I can only give one to two days a month, I have to do it where I can learn something and benefit not be in an organization and be all of a sudden out of a call all by myself and be out of what I even know how to do. And I think, so it comes down to leadership. What are we gonna do as Fairhaven Rescue and Rescue Department? We don't have that safe, the people that have this conversation with aren't here. Um, what are they gonna do to encourage people that are here to wanna work for them?
At this point.
I have a bunch of questions for them too right now.
Yeah, I, so do we. So do we, I mean, it, you know, what the.
But they are coming to the next meeting?
Well, yeah, but they said they were coming to this one, so.
That still means we got two weeks for our coverage.
No, we're covered now that, in that, uh, Polley, Ramble and all that.
Somebody will come.
Somebody's coming.
And they all know.
But I, I don't know. I, I have no idea.
But at least they know.
They know because we're Holby.
But they're gonna be a little.
Because Fairhaven has never reached out to these organizations in Holby. We don't have anybody. What was the law enforcement, people said, just so you know, you're covering all of our employees.
Really? See, that's not, that's something I didn't understand.
I think that put out to law enforcement that by the way, if you call for a Fairhaven Rescue ambulance, you're not gonna get one. I got, I got told by the. It's going to be difficult, three weeks, no light in August this year. So I'm gonna do it myself.
I think a question you guys need to pose to them, have you been in touch with the state EMS office? Is their license is hinged on this?
Oh, I'm sure of it. I, I, and it.
Well, you know what?
There's all kinds of questions, I mean, there's.
You know what it says about their license and they're, they follow their license.
Yeah.
Can I? Can we get these people together and have a special meeting, have a committee? Do we have to wait till the thirtieth before we do something else?
We're gonna pay a fifty thousand dollar thing we should never.
We're, we're not.
I just feel that.
That's the best answer I've ever been.
We should have a decent guidance.
I think there's obviously a deserved that. To go over to you to, they have a meeting on the twenty-third, maybe the board can send some reps and go there.
We'll definitely be there.
Then there's no wait for them to.
When's their board meeting?
Twenty-third. Twenty-third at four-thirty PM.
It's not?
Probably not. I don't think it's open to the public.
We, there was an invitation, wasn't there? Didn't we get an invitation to that? I thought we did.
That's what I mean. Says what you hear, Bob.
Maybe.
It didn't invite us, Amy.
No.
If you have questions or concerns, you are of course welcome to come to our next board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July twenty-three, twenty nineteen at four-thirty PM.
I think that's you folks, not us.
Well, you know what? Public funds are being expended, so therefore it has to be an open meeting. It's that simple. And, and, and.
If you have some knowledge, just.
The board, the, the board, the rescue squad board owes us that.
See what you do.
Owe's us that. I say that not knowing what the rules are. But I, I do know that there are public funds involved.
Well, it creates not charge some taxes, did that go through?
I think so.
It's a charge of tax.
Voters, the voters approve that.
I voted, I voted for that.
Yeah. We do, we do that every five years. It's kind of a rotating thing and, and they have to ask every five years and that's the way it works.
And it makes sense.
And it makes sense and it, you know.
Don't need to charge the taxes before they're gonna turn around and pay the taxes.
Well, because they are taxes, yeah, but they are also a business that if you don't have insurance, they're gonna send you reflections.
That's right. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's right.
They are a business.
Yes. And what I was hoping to get from them today and probably just ask the, uh, the manager, town manager to, to get a copy of the charter and see where we stand, um, as a town. And how it works since they've been a public and not a volunteer squad. See if that changes.
And can you just look about the board members? This maybe it's time to find a new board member that represents Fairhaven because I think Rob Sterling would be a great fit.
You're just going to.
But you just moved, you just moved.
I have higher leadership in my house. I just want to throw it out there. Everything I do, I have to run by her. But I would like to know if we have that control. That's a little disconcerting to me that this, like, board doesn't have that control because I think everybody should have a boss. If I'm not doing well, we all know there's a number to follow. And I think even if there's a board, we should, if we appointed somebody originally, it'd be really nice if we still appointed somebody as a town. If you right now appointed someone.
It's a little, it's a little strange that, that situation, to say the least.
If you don't mind letting me put out, I really appreciate that.
My, my thing is, when did it start going downhill?
Well, at that point.
Right now, we got a problem.
Because that's what the problem should have been addressed.
Right now, it's what we do again.
Right. Where, where, where we at? My understanding is, is the staff left or resigned or, or took a leave or something? Is that correct? I don't even know. That's one of the questions I was going to ask tonight.
Some of the staff left. And they're not incorrect. Morale, it was a big reason. Uh, you know, my understanding without speaking out of place is, uh, you know, you get enough micromanagement, you can only do so much. Maybe they had the right leader. Maybe they didn't have the right leader. I think looking forward without putting blame is to simply say, okay, you need to get a manager in there.
Well, how do we go from here? Where, where do we go?
We need to move forward. If we're not going to do that, then what are we going to do? But yes, a lot of people resigned. There was a reason for that.
Oh, I, well, there always is. There always is when that kind of thing happens.
And it was not money. And, you know, you don't get a whole department to leave.
No.
Over $2 now. And I believe they actually raised it recently. I was notified that they'll pay EMTs $2 more now. So the same.
That's good. I mean, we're getting there.
But nobody's jumping on.
They told us.
What does, what does Ruttland Regional pay?
For your EMT basics, it's about $16.
How much? 15?
16. 16 and.
That's my understanding, which is about the national, that's about the national.
Pretty sad.
It is. These folks are, I'm going to more and more calls, uh, as a law enforcement officer, to go to these folks and these folks are going to calls, but they have to go there first before Regional gets there. Uh, these guys are going to calls. It blows my mind. I was working with them one day voluntarily, just trying to learn my skills. And we were headed to an ambulance. So this is just Rob Sterling and I'm headed to an ambulance call. And the first thing they said to me is, you can't carry a gun or anything. I've gone 22 years wearing a bulletproof vest with a gun. And we're going into houses and I'm like, you people go here with a bulletproof vest. Are you kidding me?
Did you have rubber gloves on?
That's about all I had, you know, and they're going into dangerous situations, heroin, meth. These situations are tough. We've got to motivate people and it's got to be more than money to get this young generation to want to do this. Because in this EMT class, I was the old guard, which I still have a problem with. These are kids.
You'll get used to it.
What's that?
You'll get used to it.
I don't know. It's hard. But some of these kids were 21, 22 and the motivation in this EMT class was awesome. And they were actually fired up. They're like, okay, we're going to Fairhaven. And they started doing on the training and stuff like that. And then a lot of it was, hold on, the equipment isn't really up to date, you know, the ambulance, you know, we don't, we can go other places and have more up to date equipment that works. And there were a lot of morale issues.
I know three of my students came back to me to say that it was partially the way they were treated.
Well, we, we can beat this to death without the right people here, then we don't, we really don't have an answer.
I appreciate the select word looking into that. And I thank you for listening to us.
Um, yeah. And, I mean, the 23rd seems like the next step, which, as far as I'm concerned, until somebody tells me differently, that it's an open meeting. I think it, yeah, I, I, they would be crazy not to have an open.
Yeah, where is it?
Well, probably at the squad, squad building. But we can, uh. Yeah, let, let, can you, can you check on that? And we'll, we'll put it on our.
Last time I tried to call you, didn't go what?
On my house.
No, I screwed up and got your number from Tony.
Oh, God, call me. Call my home number.
We'll put it on our, we'll put it on our Facebook. We'll put it on our Facebook, uh, page when we know. And if we, if it's an open meeting, which I fully expect it to be. And we'll go from there.
Thank you very much for your time. 265.
No, no, don't say that. I'll catch up.
I'll give Rob my credit.
Oh, good.
I'll be able to make it.
All right, we will, um, move on. There is still, we're still doing, uh, five minutes for public comment.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Bill Wells, resident here in town for 60 some years. My wife and I are taxpayers also. We're just here about the issue of having to go by my wife's drive. She can't be here tonight. She's involved during that EMT household. So I'll hold that for comments as she wrote something that we have here. Trying to speak for her. It's my daughter, Wuska. That, uh, maybe during the first, she was on the way to Shaw's. And right out of nowhere, she, because of colorblind, she couldn't see it. She had a pothole. It was a good sized pothole. And, uh, she looked at it. Tire was damaged, rim was damaged. She almost only doubt it. I looked to look for it, but certainly it helped the drive by driver recognize where it was, but she couldn't see it. And, uh, because it was the holiday weekend, couldn't go see the manager or tell who first visited anything. So we presented to him. Said you contacted insurance company and, uh, took the tire and rim to my mechanic. He said, well, the tire was unsupervised anymore. We're not cheap drivers. Not cheap dealer. I'm afraid of the car to allow 19. He sent the, uh, our, our tolls face to the insurance company. About, about two weeks had passed. They finally responded. Approximately, um, because the town wasn't given timely, uh, warning fixing me properly. We were denied the claim. You know, we have taxpayers. My bike says, whatever, we're not bad drivers. I think they'll. Yeah. We, we're not asking for a new car or a new tire or anything. Just thought we should be compensated for that. We, you know, we came to our house. Something happened. It was my responsibility to, to get hurt. I'd be expected to pay.
Just, where was this hole?
On Washington Street, just about, just past the corner of, uh, Pennsylvania.
Yeah, that one.
Plane changes called here and that's a technical hole. And I couldn't see until a couple of drive bys. Remain here for a few days. We finally filled it with dirt eventually. And then sometime later, finally, it was patched. It's a good sized hole, almost four foot long. Here it is. Hasn't had to go through school. So we need wide. It was deep. So long. It was double. If I did something to town, I damaged something I didn't expect to pay for. No one argued about it. Just bill that, uh, you guys copied the letters on micro. I mean, when you, uh, I'll go tire for the C. My shirt left. It wasn't serviced anymore. The side was compromised and the rim damaged. Looked up the best prices for the rim and the tire. Well, now we're going to hit a discount, so it's best I can do. Now I'm asking you to consider this. You support the town. Do what you want. Support this fire by. That helped us a lot. But I'm not asking for much.
Got a picture from there.
What have we done in the past?
I think we actually have a policy.
Tire itself.
I'm not going to answer. I'm not going to answer.
I thought there was a policy for itself, something like that.
So, just for things like this and what we've been doing, um, any damage that is reported, we send it right to the insurance company and they investigate it. Whether it be a, a pothole, um, a mailbox, or a sewer backup. We pay the insurance company to handle this kind of thing. They investigate and they decide whether to pay a claim out or not.
Why did our insurance, did our insurance company refuse us?
Yes. Insurance refuses us.
And for what's the reason why our insurance refuses?
Uh, the town, because we're a municipality, we have sovereign immunity. If there's a pothole and we know about it, we're liable. If there's a pothole that pops up and we don't know about it, then once we get a report, we fill it in. And then, and that's what it is. It's, it's filled in.
But it was a pothole, not a curb pad.
It was a pothole. Bad, yeah. Bad things happen and I apologize, but this, this kind of stuff happens often. Well, I shouldn't say often, but you know, things like this pop up. And not saying that this is a dishonest claim, but what if we paid out every claim? Somebody could say, I hit a pothole and you owe me a tire. So it.
I've definitely said no to those before, sitting here.
Yeah, it's.
My question, they're saying that because you weren't notified in time, so mentally notified and.
Right, that doesn't seem.
Bob's driving down, I don't know who else hits it finally, so they're going to get covered because they got notified?
No, that doesn't seem.
That's the way the letter was written, from the insurance company, which are giving you this.
Yep. That is exactly the case. If we know about it and then somebody else is damaged, um, then we're liable. If we don't know about it, we're.
Unfortunately, then we were first victim. And after that, we have several complaints.
Yep.
Well, I fixed that. Cause I heard another the next morning, I fixed it.
That morning?
No, I did.
It was a couple of days before that was fixed.
No.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It was fixed that morning. Anyway.
Whether or not you're still damaged.
Right.
What was the total bill?
Uh, I didn't get there. Well, the rim's right there. The price of the, I don't know what rim's cost. We have to move them up from Kia. And we got the tire, the matching tire.
350, 400 bucks.
Somewhere like that. 22160 tire.
Yeah, like 360. It was like 360 total, something like that. I don't know.
That's not you. I'm not your board, that's fine.
No, I'm not saying that. I, I'm not saying that.
You wouldn't feel like you stood in my driveway and, well, no one notified me about the ice, so the insurance says.
Agreed. Let's just check our policies.
What have we done in the past? I'd like to look that up. It seems to me that we've been, that we've, uh, paid some out and I'm not sure what the difference would be.
You think we have?
I think we have. I, Sweeney? Didn't Sweeney come to?
I don't think I've paid one of these.
Well, I'd like to find out.
But if we have, then it's no problem. I just didn't want to wait first.
Let's check back and see if we've taken care of this before. And, you know, and then. You have your car fixed now, so you're using your car.
No, the car, it was being stuck.
No, but I'm saying, but you've got to take.
Takes a long time to get a rental.
Let's go through and see if this has happened, if we've done something in the past and we let them know our next meeting.
You're running now, though. You fixed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the total is 370.
370.
370, 31. So let's have Joe check it. Let's see if, if we, what we've done in the past. And, and, um, go from there.
Here's, just to be, just so we, you know where we're standing. Using sovereign immunity, um, was a way we got out of a big lawsuit one time. So I'm, I, I, so, no, no, no. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is it would be, um, it's probably going to put us into some sort of a, some sort of a bind if we, if we change that policy. So I'm not holding out as much hope as I did when you talked to me on the front lawn as I am right, as I did before. I'll be honest with you. But I want to see what we've done in the past because I think we're, you know, I think we, I think we have.
It's an odd loophole though, that it's because we didn't know about it, you're not covered.
It's something they give, they give municipalities because the, the fact, the true fact is you, there might be a pothole and nobody knows about it until it happens. So it, you know, it's far be, for me to defend a lawyer, but they came up with it. And, um, it's, it's saved the town a considerable amount of money in the past, so.
So what's the plan?
We're going to look into it.
Yeah.
And find out what we've done in the past and we'll, just the relevant one next.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Buy.
Is that okay?
Well, no, we can let you, we'll notify you when we're ready. If you're not here.
Yeah, well.
You don't have to be here.
And if Joe finds something in between, he'll, he'll send you a letter or call you. Okay?
And now the house is alive, so.
Guys, more than I want to be, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the trouble.
Yep. So if we, if we had put a cone on that pothole.
It was all right, but we didn't.
It would have been covered?
It would have been covered, yes, because we knew about it. Sovereign immunity is, is a real, well, it's, it protects towns.
Yeah.
Protects town.
I did fix it.
That's okay. Oh, Dougie.
Anybody else for public comment? Glenn, you still with us?
I am. A question, have we fixed the pothole?
Yes, the next day according, according to Sam.
Okay.
Uh, Department head reports. Speaking of Sam.
Even, we didn't cut brush on Scott Hill. Started up there. I'm working for half day, but I didn't want to get too hot. So then I come down and started ditching on. Yep. Cut that. Ditching done up through there. Got to flush the culverts. Patched in the culvert that we put in. Maple road today. That matched in. Starting on West Street tomorrow, building shoulders up. I didn't jump on it right away because I don't like to cure a little bit, just because, so. So I'm hoping by the end of the week, I'll be done.
That was the only question I had, because I had a couple of people in West Street call me and asked me when you're going to do it. And I told them, I thought it was on your agenda for coming week because they know I've read it in your previous report. So that was the question I had when you went to the disease. They want to get along the mold and we can't.
Yeah. Do you want to jump right on?
So you're going to, you mark gas or you take gas?
There's a lot, there's a lot of roads that haven't seen sunlight in quite some time. I mean, it'll be nice. Yep. Whatever you got to do. Be gentle.
Clear.
I'll go.
Everything must go.
We have to meet River Street in that corner by the Stanley House.
Brooklyn Heights.
Last, last, it's right from, uh. I don't know.
River Street, Brooklyn Heights.
River Street.
Just past the Russell one.
The weeds are growing and covering up that mirror.
No, no, I'm talking down on your, where you used to live.
Cat's Corner.
Yeah, there's a, on the corner, when you go, just before you get to Howard's Garage, on that real sharp corner, if you cut the brush on this side of the road because you can't see anything coming down. Oh, it's gone now. Okay. All right. I haven't been that way, so I, I don't know. But that's, that's what.
How about the triangle of my Howard Garage? Anybody know that? Then there's something that probably nobody's thought of. But over here in the War Memorial, who's, who was the trim in the shrubbery and stuff around the War Memorial stones there, Bob?
I have no idea.
Well, it's not being done.
It might be Mallory.
Dave Mallory.
And he's not doing it anymore.
Anyway, the War Memorial or the triangle and that big red maple tree. The triangle, cut it back up so you can see under it.
Good, thank you.
So we're going to go back over and look at the tree at Eddie Brown's, right?
Yep. Check from that room.
It's more. I, I think it's in the park, in the property anyway, so I don't think it's the end of the world. I just want to throw my hat at the door first before I go. But I think we're okay. Any other questions for Sam?
No.
Okay, Glenn?
Get over here.
Okay. Chief?
Um, I have a list of things. I have, um, Sean Hewitt just completed his 21st year. He's in his 20th, just to be his 22nd year, um, with the town. The element control is really headed lately. There's its phone calls and tickets. We explained to the ones that keep out a ticket, the most compliance, we're dismissing them if they get, if they follow through on getting the doctor's case. So this is down. I think the office is going to have to get the receipt where it's at. The 28th, 28th, we did that from Friday on Main Street. The town manager, about 60 people were there and, uh, we did see Glenn, um, came down. I think it was pretty well received for the kickoff and probably when it comes to the holiday weekend. We did see Glenn, um, came down, I think it was pretty well received for the kickoff, probably when the holiday begins. I was happy that our car won the best in show, um, and the nine of it were theirs, so that's, that's nice. Um, I sent letters a month ago to various residents around the house for junk orders, and we're gonna start following up on that, it's just been over thirty days now. Kind of prioritized now, so we can catch that. Um, last Monday, Sergeant Kerber, I went down to New Jersey and picked up some of the control cars you guys have authorized after we confirmed town manager. Um, it's currently in the barn, like a great, everyone wants to look at it. It is a two thousand seventeen Ford Corus, late 2000s. Um, it's all-wheel drive, it has thirteen thousand miles on it, eleven to. Drove it home, outstanding car, and then drove it out before, it's really nice. I have, already have the quote, um, scraping it lined up when we're ready. I have, um, planned as a star strip from the Chargers, as easily possible. And get that cleaned up without for Sam, as much as I can. To go, um, putting that money back in the reserve. Um, I directed the guys to start doing, directed patrols on West Street, the new pavement, and also put some big guard out there. And other areas on town, later on here in the park, we can try to progress, because you can have various, um, people around. I put them up there for June, and on your, on your box, I put David's ultimate money on the desk. Um, I think that's all we got.
What's the timeframe on getting it lettered?
Um, it could be lettered any day, I just have to get a point, or not, not an issue.
I'd like to see it lettered before it goes into service.
Yeah, that's fine. I got, that was the first thing I did, actually, when I got back.
Okay.
And go back to the car a little bit. We went down and looked at four, and they had a white one with a little less mileage, and they had a charcoal with a little less mileage. Model's all-wheel drive, white one was front-wheel drive, and they had fifteen, they had twenty-three thousand, uh, that was... And twenty-three thousand miles on it, so out of the ones they had, this would seem to be the best, the best fucking car.
I don't know if I heard you, I don't know if you said it. Did you see the mileage on it?
Thirteen thousand.
Okay.
Well, I don't know where they sold it, I know, the first one was thirteen, so like, thirteen-five?
That's fine.
So again, I figured this, we would help it off, paying it, uh, demanding it straight up, um, and then try to get some quote, and it's all-wheel drive, so it should be... And die, and the other two that we have all-wheel drive. And we'll have it in good after we've worked a long time, though. I think it's gonna be better than you.
Questions? Which car are we getting rid of?
Uh, two thousand ten Charger.
I thought the Quaid Durangle was the worst one we had.
It is, but it's not worth...
It's what?
It's not worth the money.
Yeah, we're still using it, right?
Yeah, we're still using it, when it's dead, it's dead, it's not, not scheduled to be replaced. The Charger, my, my plan was to try to sell a Charger any time. Hoping to get between three and about four thousand for it, which will subtract from eleven-two, which puts us at, uh, exactly two hundred dollars for a new car, which I'm hoping to get under that threshold. You guys gave me eight thousand this current, alleged July one. Um, so I was hoping that I would save eight hundred dollars after selling the other one. So, for another question.
Other questions? Nothing from you, Glenn?
You're open again.
All right. It's your turn.
Very, very quickly. Uh, the bridge grant is in. We asked for one point one million for Adam Street, uh, elevator... I'm sorry?
We got it off?
I know, we're asking for it. Uh, Bernie, Bernie Sanders, Leahy, and, um, what's the other gentleman?
Mr. Welch.
Mr. Welch, they, they all wrote letters of support to the Fed for us, and we appreciate that.
That's great.
Um, elevator grant is in. We asked for more money to, for the elevator here at Town Hall. Um, and now that those, those grants are finished, I'm gonna be working on, with the help of Sam, the capital budget, 'cause this is something that's kind of been outstanding, and the, uh, the paving plan, also with Sam, to, so that way we can get something together, instead of just kind of guessing what we're gonna pave as the, as the year comes up.
Will that money match the, uh, back one? Will that money match the repair monies that we already have for the building?
That'll be in addition to, yes.
It'll, it'll add to that.
It'll, it'll be, it's fifty thousand dollars.
Nice.
Yeah, so that should, you know, that's a good chunk.
Every little bit.
Every little bit. Um, road paving plan, fourteen percent of meters are in, uh, we have a hundred and thirty meters even, um, installed, and the guys are working pretty hard to, asking for appointments has really sped things up.
I just saw Tom yesterday, and I told him, goodbye, you can do four at my place.
Anytime.
Anytime, 'cause I'm, usually I'm always there, and I told him the other day, if he's just driving by, if I parked there, come in, I can get him in all the buildings, so...
Yeah, cool, we appreciate it.
Just to call a hit on us, and be, you know.
'Cause it literally, literally takes five minutes.
Well, he said it, you're changing in less than ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the guy's doing...
That's pretty good.
Yeah, they're doing a good job.
As long as they shut off before I act her.
And, uh, they're coming, I think it's next week to, for the software. They're gonna install the software, do some training.
Now, there, there's no, on these new meters, there's no outside... They're not hooked on any electronics.
No.
Hooked up before it is, just a straight meter, correct?
Most time it's pulling that old wire. They take it all out. I said, leave it. He says, no, we're leaving it nice for you.
You don't have to take it.
Good. No.
It doesn't, yeah. It's not hooked up.
They're trying to do a good job.
Right now, hole in the wall is full, the wire is...
They're trying to do a nice job.
Don't need a gun, 'cause I don't want the holes from ants getting in there.
Anyway, they're doing...
Drafting the winter.
Good things, that's my...
It's good you're moving so fast.
Yeah, they're, they're clipping it.
So software...
Oh, it's coming.
Is stormproof?
Stormproof?
Are you gonna put a surge protector on it?
No, software as in going on Bev's computer. But yes, it's okay. Um...
I know, it's different, but...
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, I talked to Jenny today, O one O and O three O will be adding money to the fund balance still, um, you know, as we get deeper and further away from last fiscal year, sometimes things get pulled out of that, but, uh, our, our finances are looking pretty good.
We're gonna have a large amount of underspent funds? Will we have a large amount of underspent funds?
I'm not gonna say a large amount, but we were frugal.
I was going to ask you, so I'll ask you now, just to give us an overview of the fund balance by the next week. That's good. I was looking at it.
Yeah, um...
Just to see where we're at, and, you know, I don't want, like John said, don't wanna be surprised, but...
No.
Large, large amounts of money that we...
I almost had a heart attack.
Yeah, just so you, just so we know.
Okay. Um, and I sent an email last time, and I forgot to ask at the last meeting, does the board wanna do an eighteen-month manager review? We did a six-month, we did a one-year. Uh, if you want to, if not...
Let's do the two-year.
Just two-year?
Would you be a year before your contract's up, right?
Yeah. Right on time. Okay, so let's skip that.
I mean, that'll put us, that's gonna be in February.
It'll be in February.
Right, that's fine.
And that means the budget, the budget is over with, and we can concentrate on it. And we'll know how we did with the budget.
Right.
Yeah. Well, see, that's worse.
And I did talk to, I got an email to, uh, from Chris Cole, asked about the survey. The survey was done and submitted to the state, and... I, I don't know why it was submitted to the state, but, um, he's waiting to hear back from them. So I'll ping him again here in a couple of weeks to see what's going on.
Who knows? She should be here, right here in the town, you know, she has a...
Yeah, I mean, we're swapping land.
Is it the state, or is it going to the school?
We're just formally changing land.
He told me state.
Okay.
So there might be a subdivision that I don't know about, that, but, yeah.
Greatest one, the greatest one playground?
Land swap.
Right, and that's all I had for you guys. Okay, uh, moving right along. Yeah, we're catching up. Uh, personnel, P P E?
Yeah, personal protective.
Yeah, okay.
Equipment policy, yes.
Have you, much as I hate to say this, have, as the, uh, union reviewed this, they should be in favor of this.
Oh, you know what, they have not. I didn't even think to submit it, but I can pass it on.
Ask them if they wanna look at, I mean, I, it should be, it's for their benefit, so it should be a slam dunk, but I would not wanna offend...
Yeah.
For no good reason.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll talk to Bud and...
I did get insurance.
Yeah, so, good, I mean, whatever you can do, I mean, I...
While we're on this subject, we did have, um, Green Mountain Safety, OSHA's not punitive arm came out and did a review of the garage and the wastewater plant. Uh, we did pretty good, but the first thing they asked was for this policy. So I said, yeah, the guys are reviewing it, which, which is great.
Okay.
We're waiting to hear back for the report on that.
Uh, yeah. Generally speaking, if they give you any, if they give you any things, they gave, they give you X amount, like ninety days to fix them, or whatever it is, but if you don't fix them, then, then the trouble begins, but...
We're trying to stay ahead of the curve.
Yeah, that, that's really great. I mean, that's the way to work it.
It wasn't bad.
So we're tabled on the personal protective till next meeting, so the union can look at it.
I...
Did anybody have anything on it?
I, I'm asking if, I'm...
I would think they should look at it.
Yeah. It just keeps the peace, I mean, for me, I don't know.
Before you make a policy, it's, it's gonna be involved with them, you better, like you said, it's to benefit them, because it...
Safety, it, it...
Safety, safety.
And it's, uh, OSHA required, OSHA required, whatever it's called here.
OSHA, OSHA.
But...
This is all through OSHA, OSHA and all the rest of them, it's all been...
The, the policy came from our insurance company, it's a template policy that we just adjust for our use, but OSHA did ask for that policy.
If you wanted it, but... Like I said, it's protecting them anyway, they're protecting the people that work for us.
Yep.
Right? I'll make a motion that we accept the call. Get it over with. You don't think we should let the union look at it?
Yeah, we're protecting them. I agree with first one.
I'll, I'll second that, because I think we should do this.
What do you think? There's a second. Any other, any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
All right.
No, it's worth thinking, should've been adjusted. Glenn?
Yes?
Are you, uh, are you an I or a N?
I, I, I'm still there, oh, it looks, it looks good, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Very shit.
Well, yeah, you should know it more than anybody. All right.
The only, the only thing that the, uh, when the, the employees that this is gonna protect, that they're going to want to look at would be the disciplinary for violating, if, if, if both. Yeah, it looks pretty serious, they're all...
Okay, all right. So it's unanimous, yeah?
Is that just E W or something, I think it's corporate.
Well, I think you're...
I'm bad at that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you might wanna look at it.
Hold on, do you have any, see me like Kathy?
Yeah, he can have that.
This is my ear.
No, it's not.
Oh, Joe. I was talking about that was on your sign.
Thank you.
That is my ear.
All right, uh...
So that's when we dig up the perfect one.
Yep.
Glenn should go and sign.
Hey Glenn, I'm gonna hold on to this in my office for next time you're around.
To sign.
To sign, yeah. Then it will be unanimous. Um, okay, Governor's Highway Safety Grant. The chief, the chief is here, and I assume the sheriff, sheriff for administering, yep?
I'm Kevin Gino, I'm the sheriff of Rockland County, I'm the state coordinator, and I work through the, uh, state office of highway safety.
All right. I don't know how, how we wanna do this, but I, I think that the questions have been asked about, um, why are we involved in general? How does it work? Where's, where's, uh, the benefit, that kind of thing? So if you wanna speak to it, and then we can ask questions, or how do you wanna do that? Or we can ask you questions, or...
I guess I don't want you, I mean, sometimes you've been here a long time. Um, we started highway safety in two thousand and five. Um, we've been a partner with them since two thousand and five. Um, we've been a partner right up through till current. We're currently working the grant. We're given a, um, allocation, used to be prior to, uh, two thousand sixteen. Prior to two thousand sixteen, it was, it was in that direct grant, so that each town, we had to, we kind of managed, we had X amount of dollars, and managed, we had power. Um, now the grant does not come to us, it's a sub-grant, the sheriff's department will grant, Kevin manages the grant, and kind of allies, you have X amount of funds. Um, so when we put it together, we, we had talked to him, um, as far as like the DUI grant, problem days, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sometimes Sundays. Um, so at this point, as far as the DUI, we, we run DUI, sometimes Thursdays and Fridays, Saturdays, that's been up primarily historically, and that is... We're most likely to be getting, um, prosecuted drivers. Um, Kevin can speak to the DAB more than I can. The highway safety is used, um, again, that, um, high, high traffic areas, high problem areas, high accident areas, they give us, um, hotspots to look at. Not, it's not focused generally on that, like twenty-two A is a hot spot from here all the way to every day, where everybody has a grant. You know, there's your section of road you're responsible for, um, and during the course of your highway safety, DUI time, you don't wanna focus on a hotspot, that was, that's one area. But it's not limited to that. We have problems on West Street, or River Street, or high crash areas, um, for the village, that's... So it can be used for all that, so we've used that, um, to put a supplemental patrol on, and to keep, keep the colors out there, to keep, uh, to say this, you know, an officer gets tied up on the, on the grass, they're gone, and it keeps up an active patrol, you can see it out, and it's also visual return. We're not saving money by having it, but it's a supplemental service, and we can provide that with funds, um, limit what we can put on the street. Um, questions you had for, it's basically that in a nutshell, is what we're doing, it's a supplemental.
I mean, basic thing with, with highway safety, we've changed our name, it's all about behavioral safety now, and changing habits out there. I'm sure every day, each one of you sees some bad driving behavior, but I'm now, uh, one of the most common complaints I get is cell phones, every day. And, uh, it really touched home to me when that crash happened Sunday on twenty-two A, just over the Fair Haven line. We put so much work into twenty-two A, and, and it's not really long, horseness problem anymore, I mean, it's really a problem with the road, it really is. The accident where this, where the crash happened on Sunday is actually a good section for our, but, you know, once you get over a long hill on that way through Benson, it's bad, there's no room for forgiveness. And so our goal is to just reduce crashes, save lives, and not have serious bodily injuries, and we work on it really hard. And it goes data maps constantly, telling us, hey, this is a hotspot, you need to go here, you need to do this, you need to do that. It's gotten so much better and faster in the last fifteen years, no longer working on last year's data, you're working on last week's now, you know? So everything is getting caught up in the past, and it's about education, they're pumping a lot of education out there, you know, with a lot of different things, so...
Our crash data goes right in, as soon as it gets in there, it enters, and it gets real-time caught.
Every department is important, Rockland County, Fair Haven Police Department, in my book, is really important, because of twenty-two A, your local roads, your local roads, get a lot of truck traffic, and they're really good, and, and it also had crashes, you know, so that's a, an instrumental part of the program, you know, keeping the highways safe. When we talk about what does one life worth, I don't know if any of you have ever known somebody that died in a fatal crash, but it affects more than one person, it affects the whole thing, you know, and then there's the cost behind it. So if we can eliminate that, that's what we're trying to do, and I'm glad to take any questions into that.
Uh, one of the prominent lead guys, I think it's being used just to subsidize somebody's paycheck. I don't believe they should be getting time and a half money for this. I mean, this is a separate job, and I don't see what the town of Fair Haven is benefiting at all, because all of our equipment's on the road all the time. We're getting extra mileage on the cars, and every time we turn around, we get something different with vehicles. Uh, there's really no benefit to the town to have this. I understand where you're coming from, for safety, but... But I can't see why, if somebody's out there doing this job, uh, if the sheriff's department is one of his handlers, that's the vehicles they should be using. Not the cruisers and the towns that are here. I mean, we have, we have a hard enough time maintaining the cruisers as it is. And to put all these extra miles on them is continuous. I see no benefit to the town of Fairhaven.
The town receives.
And the fact that you go through these papers and there's a certain guys that are using it and I feel are just using it to subsidize your paycheck. And they shouldn't be getting time and a half money for it.
A couple of things is that is, not, I'm not here to argue or fight. You guys can make whatever decision you want, but as far as the cars. The last car that I had, one oh six, and we just retired it a couple of years ago, five hundred and forty thousand. We keep stuff forever. The car we're getting rid of now is one oh nine. Ten years in the police service.
How many miles on it in the fair right now? Twenty-one thousand. The fair is what, a year? Less than fourteen months old?
It's not in October of seventeen.
So it's not even, it's not, it's not two years old then?
No, but it's right on pace to have a thousand miles on it. That's an average driver's car.
I think, I just don't feel that the town benefits at all from this.
You get fifty-eight cents a mile. Most police cars are getting worse from ten to fifteen miles to the gallon in the worst circumstances. So, you know, if you take fifty-eight cents, five miles, that more than pay per gallon of gas. Now let's take the fifty-eight cents times the next five, two ninety, that goes to your maintenance. Nobody splits that up to look at that. And in addition to that, you get equipment grants for participating in highway safety. Like this year for, we got eight thousand dollars to spend on equipment. That's a little like that you didn't have to buy a, a video camera for the car you didn't have to buy. So you can't really say it's, it's costing you. I mean, I, I just don't see that.
We've outfitted every car since two thousand. Since the target program, since the, the first charge we bought oh six, we've outfitted every car up I would say. I have money left right now and I would like to ask if I could outfit a new car with new stuff. Everything we have fits a dodge. We can go forward. It was economical and reasonable to do the deal, but not all that stuff can transfer over.
But you go through these, you go through the time and we don't even know half these people. I don't know where you're bringing these people in from and working this highway safety program.
There's only like three people working. That's all who wants. If you see me working, it's not because I want to, because I don't have anybody else.
Well, I don't think our SRO should be doing this. That's not his job. His job is working at the high school.
Yep, just allocating the manpower that I have, unfortunately, at times I'm doing the deal. I do have this here to show, it is up last month, shows that from year from oh five to nineteen, we brought eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars in equipment and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional supplemental patrols to the community.
Oh five to now?
Oh five to now. And that was directly right out of the, and I have every grant, every equipment in the drawer at the office. So I pulled this directly out of the, out of files. Um, it's also a benefit if you have something major happen. That's happened numerous times. Is if the officer's working in their title, the officer can, can leave, not paying a, an overtime rate per guy to commit. They go off the grant. It's a part timer. You pay fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour for that hour to help and then they go back on the grant. But they're readily available or not relying on the town.
It still should be time and a half money. It's a separate job.
You're talking about one person.
I've talked about everything. If anybody, if there's one person that doesn't get the time and a half money, everybody else does.
Anybody that's part time gets a separate rate. And if you looked at the last time, when Hunter worked, because I know who you're talking about, he just worked and he got this straight regular pay because it was not allowed.
I don't pass up a.
No, the one prior to that was overtime because he had already worked his forty hours during the week. And that was his ruling that changed with Joe, Joe and Jenny did some research that if something happened, we had to pay him overtime. His last one, we billed at twenty-seven dollars an hour. That covers all the FICA, the medical and all the other expenses, but his rate was the same rate he gets through the annual.
We don't, we don't rent all our town equipment. We don't rent all our public works department. And I think our police department should worry about taking care of the town of Fairhaven.
Well, that's what we're doing with this. And that's why I brought Kevin in. That's why I brought Kevin in. And here's, I guess the problem is, I'd like you to do is actually come in. I have documentation. I have tickets where they were written. You can see, I went to Kevin. I said, hey, things have changed this year. We're not after what you guys wanted was, hey, if you guys want you to hear. And I explained, we're going to be here unless we raise a road check to meet an obligation or maybe look at our ticket. He can attest with our ticket. We didn't go. I did it here. We didn't go out of town. And Kevin understood. You'd rather have us a partner and do what you, the way you guys want it to be a partner and I'm okay with not going out of town.
But I did come over here.
Yes.
I've worked several times in Fairhaven.
And I do remember, and I'm going to quote Jay at one of the meetings, and I'm sure it's recorded, and I said, I don't really want to go out of town. And Jay goes, well, I wouldn't mind if you maybe went to Benson. And I remember you saying that. And it was a very limited scope of where we were.
That was when we still had, that's when we still had a contract with Benson.
No. It was under highway safety. Because I said exactly like, I don't want to go to Kevin. So I, I've just been, I, I'm asking the board about us continuing the program. And that's why I said, when you guys approved it, this is a good time to monitor. If you see some issues, point it out. I don't mind getting feedback from you. And that's why I've been on the guys like, hey, we're not going out of town. There was a road check we called in for, but he did not attend. Just, there was no requirement to do that. Kevin would like us to do that, but obviously he understands, well, if you guys help another month to do that. That's why we've really focused here on town. I mean, we have, we've more traffic tickets than we ever have this year. I got a really good crew. They're active. They're out trying to prevent accidents. We had seven this month. I don't know, I really, and I guess I'm frustrated because we had this meeting. You guys asked what, this is what you wanted and that's what we've been doing. I know there was some concerns about a car stop. I did a big shot. I asked the officer, why are we at a big shot? He goes, well, I didn't catch him before we got down Long Hill. And if you don't stop him, and I will agree, if you don't stop the car on Long Hill, the next best spot is that big shot. Because if you stop somebody, you're literally in one whole half of the lane. So that's the next feasible place to stop somebody.
I don't think I'd pull over for you until I got there.
It's really bad. I stopped cars there and went, this is not a good idea because you have both shoulders. Yes, twenty-two A does get some emphasis, but the test was that accident on somebody that came in, it's hours. They called me at home and said, hey, we got a really bad accident. And then West Bay Fire got there and determined the location wasn't ours. I started calling manpower out, I had to call them back to stay home.
No, I just think forty-two dollars an hour is a lot of money.
For what do you want that?
For the city highway safety program.
Where? Who are you talking about?
This is for Dale Kerber.
Well, the forty-two includes all of, all of the FICA and that's what we get reimbursed. Jenny has a bill rate.
But that's still time and a half money.
It is his overtime, yes.
That's what I'm saying. It's a separate job. You shouldn't be getting time and a half.
A lot of that officer is, is not really what it's ever got. He's, it's to supplement our department. And what they really want at one point, I had to argue with highway safety, they want it all overtime. And I'm like, well, I have part timers that work that it's not overtime. I don't feel we should be paying them an overtime rate. Other municipalities, neighboring pay thirty-eight dollars an hour to these officers. I don't agree with it. It's not overtime.
I think we should take care of our town. That's what we should do.
Well, I guess Jay, I'm going to go. I agree with you. Yes. And if you look and I have the traffic tickets and I wish you would come in. Dale worked the other day. Every ticket he wrote sixteen thousand more on the gun app. That's taking care of our town and dealing with the problem. When the patrol officer was tied up by having an arrest on a warrant, that officer was still here in our town. Addressing problems. I mean, we do have speed problems, Four Street, West Street, River Street, twenty-two A. And those patrols augment what we can do. If you take them away, we're not going to be able to do as much of that. When those guys are out, that's all they're doing unless there's a, a major call or a domestic or something where there's an arrest and, and they have to go off. That's why if you look at some of the highway safety sheets, you'll see a guy worked six, nine to ten P M, went off the grant, came back on at midnight. That's because there was another incident that required a second officer. So they went on town time and then goes, and then goes back to the grant. So sometimes period, you'll see like, okay, June twelfth and June thirteenth. It's really the same night, but he went off at midnight, came back on for an hour. Or went back on an hour later, but the officer needed assistance. Which having that there is a lot sooner than having to rely on the state or castle or a lot of us to come out. And it's going to be overtime, I.
That should be, that should be a separate job.
Well, if I follow, if I follow Dale Kerber for a government, that he's, he gets overtime. It's not a separate job.
Not, not even doing for the town, but if you're working, this is a separate deal. This has nothing to do with the town.
Enforcing the laws in our community and that's what.
Has nothing to do with the town.
It does. We have seating problems in town. We have accidents in town. We have.
But it's a different program. It has nothing to do with the town of Fairhaven.
But it's still what we have to handle.
It's all you're doing, you're subsidizing your paycheck. And that's where I'm going, that's where I'm going in with the conversation. Because that's all I see happening is you're subsidizing your paycheck.
So look, the accident on West Street was a DUI accident. Who handles that, that accident?
I would think the town of Fairhaven should.
Okay, the town of Fairhaven didn't handle that. Governor's Highway Safety paid for it because the officer on duty responded to that crash. He arrested the one for DUI. We didn't pay for that. That's a dealing with a problem in our own community. And that's what you wanted. You asked to pull it back. And when we pulled it back, we're, all we're doing is enforcing traffic, safety, cell phones, aggressive driving, crosswalks. Everything that we have problems with within our own community.
All the drug cases going to town. All the drug houses, take care of that. Yeah, but we're still done.
Absolutely.
So that's where our police department should be working on.
We are working on those. But again, if I'm working on a drug case, I can't do traffic. So you have to prioritize. So when people call up and say, people are speeding on West Street, sorry, I can't get there. I'm doing X. And that's the whole, you know, it can be everywhere. And this allows us to more opportunity to address those other problems.
Uh, Jay, I need your comment on the highway safety grant.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I, I, I'm going to move there at the spot. I've been, been Jay office, like, I, I believe it's a minimal cost to the town to support highway safety grant. I did a little research for a while on the governor's highway safety council, you know, which, what was the purpose? How they got together? It's because we were losing too many lives from the state. So they, they started putting a program together and they had some grants so we could do things like, uh, uh, clicker ticket and, and, and the crash. And the good news is the numbers are going in the right direction. They're going in. Now, uh, there's also a cost. It is, uh, that two of these grants were able to get, uh, some additional equipment that we don't have to charge taxpayers to reach in the budget for. Part of it's some concerns and I, and I hear you, Jay, about the concerns of, of, hey, are we having some people that might be from a payroll standpoint? Could they be possibly abusing? I'm saying if that's, if that's the key, so we should look at it and deal with that. But as far as, uh, supporting the governor highway safety grant, I can tell you I support it.
I mean, just as far as the whole padding the pockets of, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing illegal happening. Kevin's been in auditing it every month. There's tickets to show for every stop, either written warning or, uh, written warning.
And, and apparently I was also working there in my crash period, you know, and also working eighty-five times a year. I really support Fairhaven program.
So where, when do you go out of town? Uh, you, you said clicker, clicker ticket.
No, clicker ticket was the two week clicker ticket. I mean, you've been on long enough to know that, um, we didn't do it this year. Well, we did it, like I did it one day, but I stayed. It was the day, I looked at the day, okay, they're going to be Fairhaven, Castleton, um, West Bay and Benson. So I worked that one day, but I never left here. I was on the map this year. I never left here. So those are the target areas. It was a clicker ticket in May, a two week period. That's when you saw Killington here and the sheriff's in front of the city. We did not go out of town this year because you guys had those concerns and I wanted to make you guys happy. I said, you know what? Everyone was okay with it. We're going to work it. We're going to stay here. Um, again, sometimes the, the governor's highway safety would like to see a unified front on road checks. I'm not big on having them here, so if they have, Kevin sponsors one over in the city, we'll go over and do a road check from seven to nine and then come back. So you'll see on the sheets. We have not even, we haven't embedded any of that this year. And it's, it's clear right on the sheet. The town manager gets them. We'll see. Road check one, two hours, and then we write the location. Where did you work? Village Route four, Route seven, road check would be in that little, uh, spot. Again, all the tickets, when you write a ticket, all the town municipalities, you can't make it up. You know, I wrote a ticket on Washington Street in Rutherford, right area. That's because the money goes back to the municipality that you're writing up. Find the government. So it's, everything is tracked. It's pretty hard to get away with. I don't think anybody wants to risk their job over forty dollars. It's not worth it. Because again, everything's there. They can come in, stops are recorded, the car. With the camera. And I just go back to that equipment. I mean, we just bought a new camera. That was, the town paid seven hundred dollars for a forty-nine hundred dollar camera. And those are vital. Scottwood DUIs are arrested. If there's no video, they don't really want to take them anymore. And they're used, and then when they did the survey, why have we paid sixteen percent? Because eighty-four percent of the time they're for traffic and sixteen percent for other. So they asked a sixteen percent. Use prosecution. Some dairy body mics, all stops are recorded. Car stops are recorded on radio locations. I don't know, it's really, again, it's, I think it's been a beneficial program. Again, at no point would I ever say that we're saving anybody money. We're, we're utilizing funds that, uh, additional service have no, no cost to the town as far as, yes, there's some, probably some ancillary costs, but as far as the mileage, um, and if you talk to Jenny, she can show you where she's taking the money. And I know at one point, uh, you would question like, okay, why is, we have twelve thousand dollar budget for fuel and why do we spend this? Remember, she'd take the money and she would move it around and at the end, it was confusing for the board. And Jenny had changed at the show where she was at, at the end of the year, taking that money to offset, uh, you know, some, your expenses for repairs and for maintenance. And fuel.
And fuel. I guess, I guess I'm, I want, I want you here. I want us to have an overpaying, whatever it is, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, close to corner town dollar a year for a police force. And that's, so Officer, so Officer Gino understands that we're, we're looking to do that. I would like to know that, I would like to know how the supplemental. I'm a little confused on that. It seems like we have part timers all over the place.
Yeah, the patrol is supplemental because right now you're only authorized four hours. So anytime the highway safety can't be done on regular time, it's possible. So if I just say today is my normal shift, I'm going to work eight hours and build highway safety, you're going to come in and audit and say, well, no, you were regularly scheduled to work. You really only work thirty hours for the town because that's our highway safety. You've got to make like forty to do that. So the grants are enhanced to be able to do what you can't do over and above. So yes, you see part timers. I started using part timers a while ago because you get more bang for your buck. If they gave you twenty thousand and you had a part timer working it or a full timer working overtime at forty dollars an hour versus paying a part timer fifteen, you're maximizing your, your money and what you can supplement your department. So if you look at the two hundred and fifty thousand over the last ten years, that's the additional supplemental. It's kind of like when we got the cops grant. I know it wasn't popular, but the cops grant, but it had to supplement for anything you do when, when you find it. We bought that, um, when we got the money for interest money, when we seized the money, you had to use it to supplement your department. It couldn't be a supplement. So I couldn't take the money and fund a full time officer with that two hundred and fifty thousand over the last ten years. You have to over and above your normal shift. And so I go back to highway safety. One time they called me out here and said, oh, it's a, they're not paying these guys overtime. And the grants were, were really designed for larger departments. They live up to twenty-four hours or across the country when they give it. We admit some of that, it's larger agencies have the ability to do that. Small towns were not twenty-four hour department. We're all, Killington has a grant. And it's really hard to do with two guys. That's kind of how this was designed, something that can give you the extra patrols. We couldn't put the extra patrol on. I got fifteen thousand dollars in my part time money. It's not going to last too long. If I tried to do that out of our regular homes, not possible. And then when you look at the equipment. I've always got big ticket items, five thousand dollar cameras. I've always grabbed them. We can't, can't afford to do that. Light bars. That speed card was down in John Lawn with seventy-five hundred dollars.
Got a lot of compliments on it.
Which was governor's highway safety funded that. So again, it's not a perfect world and I do understand your concerns. I just, I'm looking at this. We are addressing our problems in our town with those funds.
How does, how does it get paid out? It looks like it kind of stretches a little bit.
Uh, it runs month to month. So I'll do a report in July. I just did June.
Okay, so you just bill June's?
Yeah, they go in weekly or they go in by pay period. Jenny holds the sheet. I have a sheet. Uh, which has worked out great because sometimes she'll have a sheet that I don't have a sheet or vice versa. She checks the numbers. She makes sure all the numbers die.
You're just billing them for June now?
No, June went in already. We just say, we just did June.
So we haven't been paid for June yet. So we're in a deficit for overspending for our yearly.
No, it's, they're, they're on time. Everything's up.
I'm just using June as an example. So any month gets billed. Kevin likes it by the fifteenth at the latest. He submits it once it goes through the program and it comes through every benefit of town. And that's, again, if you look at the sheets and again, anytime if somebody wants to submit us questions, I can show you the program. I can show you where the guys enter the mileage. I double check the mileage. We double check the salaries. The salaries have to match. It broke down as if you, but if you had an arrest during the shift, you worked eight hours, you had one arrest, that was a two hour processing time, a half hour travel. Everything should have, it won't let, it won't check okay unless the, all the hours die. We can tell, okay, you spent a half hour in the road for jail. So everything right there is tracked.
I'm looking at the accounts receivable that you, you gave us. And there's two invoices for the thirteenth of June that don't show paid. Yeah, two, uh, DUI nineteen May, nineteen May. And, and uh, then OP nineteen May. So there's twenty two hundred each.
The May OP and DUI does not look big. You bet we don't.
I'll give you the benefit of the doubt because it's the end of the fiscal year or?
Yeah, that's the problem we run into every year with me and June. They'll have July and start getting paid. Usually.
Cause usually there's not more than one out there.
No, usually the, the history of West Street.
No.
Now it's faster with year system. I mean, there are these electronics, more handwritten stuff that you send in. It's all electronic and it's definitely good. I'm telling you, usually they pay with five days.
And then there, I mean, the two, the two that were invoiced for June are thirteen hundred and seventeen hundred. They're June, but they were invoiced seven ten and seven fifteen. So I can argue that.
No, one went out faster and then there was one that happened, like, but I had to estimate the payroll. And when I came in, there was some time that was on there that Jenny already paid. So because she tested verified pay, she didn't give it to Kevin until after she did this more here. So she could verify payroll for when they didn't give me. That's why the OP went ahead of the, uh, excuse me, the DUI went ahead of the OP. And I explained that to him. There was just a payroll one that we locked down.
Jenny and I track the, uh, track grants pretty close. Not only the Chiefs, but also what's going through uh, DPW and myself. We're, we're staying on top of it.
Is this gonna change at the end of the year? Bottom line, cause these are, these are revenue from, from May really, or June.
I think that's in a wash account though, because it's not part of our reserve budget. So that whole collection bottom line, all.
It will if they've already paid employees.
But she has it in a separate account or separate from the.
It still came out of, it still comes out of the town's account for the police department because they're getting paid through the police department.
We'll get it back. We get paid back for the business.
She didn't indicate a problem, did she?
Okay, it's just.
Jenny didn't indicate a problem, I mean.
It's just outstanding. I want to get clarity. A lot of our questions are internal scheduling as well. And I think it has to do with the part time and how that works.
Yeah, the part time right now, like I said, I'm using, uh, I have one guy that wants to work right now, but a few others that I've been trying to get fraud and they, you gotta work during this opening. And I've been using him, Joe and I talked about, someone gets cut paid on some of them that don't want to work. There's a few of them, every time that you get to the point where like, I'm gonna cut paid and you have some for task to be asked, well, I can take that. So you kind of back off a little bit because they fill in the time of, time of leave.
How many, how many part timers do you use on a regular basis or is there?
A regular basis?
Yeah.
Um, I think I'm just shooting along right now, a regular basis. Some of the rest of the work field that ask me. Again, I, I post, I post the shifts. I look at, I open shifts for them up. If I have, you know, a Monday day to patrol, I'll post that. And then I'll open Friday night DUI, Saturday DUI, and they all respond back to me. If these are the shifts that I'm looking to fill and then. Cause the DUI is there. That gets filled separately versus a regular patrol.
Other questions?
But I can't use DUI to cover shifts either.
Yeah, I understand that. But I, I'm, I want people, I want my opinion as I want our people here, you know?
And I guess, can you, can we guys choose to continue it? I hope you do, but if, if you do, come in and I can show you the sheets. I know that Glenn stopped in and I showed him the sheets. Yeah, Calvin's been in, I showed him the sheets. The town manager, he comes to me and says, hey, this guy didn't stop in the car. You know, I mean, he's looking at, he's, he's like, oh, I know, it's like one point one per hour. So I explained it to him, it was a slow night, la la drop.
So a lot of time, a little pair of, so makes you wonder. So it's true, I have asked about the low car count, but sometimes it's they grab somebody and then take them to Rutland. So you'll see like three hours on a shift. But it's because they grabbed the guy and then they were spending time, yeah, traveling. So it's.
You know, the other night, the officer ended up staying over a little bit below some sheet, but you got a few different justice car stops. And one of them, you were afraid. Because it happened on Highway Safety, during car stop, Highway Safety uncovered that that time. There was about seven hours of processing. It's confusing of justice, but if it was a normal officer, that could be off the roof without an hour of processing. And that's seven hours with nobody down. I guess that's gonna go back to the supplement is, is that would be if that was a cherry on Friday night, got that, she'd be gone all night. And if there's any problems, any other calls, you gotta rely on prosecutors, they can answer or open the conference or somebody can come up and handle that call until you clear. Fortunately, both the DUI already got it, so it kept the other officer out.
Glenn, anything else?
Uh, no. Uh, are you looking for a motion or what are you doing here?
I'm not really sure at this point.
We still got another six months left here.
On this, on this one?
Right here until I believe so January.
No, this one is through October and then the next grant cycle will be October one. It's on the fiscal year, October, not October. So this one here is currently, um, I will come back in October and have you guys communicate again.
We will discuss that again?
I will go on to write this day and I don't support.
I'm skeptical to say the least, but uh.
And I've been working hard to show you, have you seen?
Throw us the documentation, throw us whatever you got. Um, I appreciate that you're in town. That's, that's the most important thing for me. And that's the, that's probably will sway me as much as anything.
I mean, I can show you, I can't show you the names on the traffic tickets, but I can show you the locations.
No, that's fine.
You can put on those, Joe has the small sheets and Jenny keeps them. And I have the guys, right? If you, for some reason, end up on, turn on Route thirty and travel Route thirty at all, put Route thirty on patrol. And I have them right twenty two A, Route four A, Route four, Village. And I'm trying to get them, um, twenty two A and four A are through here.
I would be interested as well, and then we'll probably should stop beating this horse. But um, I'd be interested in, in see the, the part timers and how that works. And I'm, I'm still confused on that. I don't want to waste time here. I, I.
The part timers right now only, I put a schedule out, you know, and they're this week one, week two, week three. So just quickly run through, if I get an officer that says I want this weekend off, um, maybe the East, but I'll, you know, since I've got this date, this date, Saturday patrol, Friday night patrol, and I put it out. So I'll do this one for August, probably next week. Send it out and then they respond. So the schedule that we have, those are the openings. And then I just put the DUI shifts, these are the DUI openings that we have. What do you want to work? And then they divide them up. Right now I have like one or two that are taking shifts. The others, we have one with Killington full time. One guy is settling around in a hospital. It's hard, some of them are hard to nail down. They all have full time jobs. Unfortunately, sometimes I think I have too many part time guys, but then when you run down a list like school teachers and you have thirty on the list and you go all the way to the bottom, you get that one person to work that four hour block that you need. So sometimes it's difficult. It'd be nice to have, like, right now I have one guy, Jim Song. He's a level two E sir, which means he can handle everything within like except murder, which is over, I don't wanna say everything, but you have a level two and a level two E. Those two of these all be old school. Part timers have been on forever. So he can handle more crimes, basically almost equivalent for level three, which myself know what some full time is for. And he wants to work. So right now he's been getting a lot of the shifts. And it's been nice to say for the month, okay, I know I've got four open days, you got, I'm plugging you in.
All right. Any other questions? We'll let you guys go to bed or back to work or wherever you're on. Thank you. Thanks for coming over.
Well, we've got some people here from, I think, from the regional economic development ground. We'll go there next year.
That's a great idea.
Row and Bridge Stand.
Wish I'd thought of that.
Great, great minds, though. I'm, you know, I'm siding with him because I have old ears too.
All right, we will do that. We will switch up on John's recommendation. Uh, to talk about the regional economic development grant.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we talked about this, uh, this grant that's going through the state. Uh, the town has the opportunity to apply on behalf of a local business, um, to get that business some grant funding. Uh, the maximum amount is twenty five thousand dollars for this grant. Uh, the board asked that we advertise this to the town to not just choose somebody, but to give the town folk a chance to, uh, apply as, as we could say. The only person that applied was, um, yeah, Scotch Hill Brewery. On that, on that point though, just, uh, it was a short notice. Next year I've asked the EDC chair to see if she could start something in early June and get the word out sooner so that way we can have a legitimate process instead of just two weeks, by the way, you can throw us some money.
Because they need a, like a shovel ready project, right?
Yes, it has to be shovel ready, yes.
Is this an every year thing that's going to happen?
I, I hope so.
I mean, right now it looks like it's not going to be just like one time just this year and then we won't see it again?
Well, this, well, this year we'll apply and yeah, next year, this grant comes around every year.
You have to apply for it every year?
Yes.
The thing about it is, it's gonna be really popular.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it could bring businesses in. I mean, it's.
We're trying.
But you, are you saying that we should advertise it longer this time?
No, this time we, this time we can't. The deadline is July thirty first.
And you've already got this grant? This grant is already here?
No, we're.
We've done application.
You, you know how Apple Tree, we, the money passed through us to Apple Tree?
Okay.
That would be the same thing in this case. We'd get money and then hand it off to a business.
Okay. But we, we have to have it done before the end of July. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And tonight, yeah, tonight's pretty much it. I have to have time to write the grant.
Does he have to pay it back?
No.
So we're not on the hook for anything until like the ten?
No, this, this doesn't cost the town anything except a little bit of my time.
Similar to some like Apple Tree or when we did the Allen House on Rosas, right?
Yes.
So what do you need? Our approval?
Uh, yeah, so, I'm sorry? I do need a motion and, uh, the board wrote this nice letter.
Yes, thank you, board.
Secured it that actually.
Yeah. To, uh, to send on behalf saying that the board supports, um, uh, the brewery.
Did we all get a free one after that? Make the motion, Jeff, in a second.
Jeff, it's really not really good to ask for.
No, it's not.
Claire, whatever he made for me, I'll second.
I made a some move, something, something there.
Yeah, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed?
How are you coming?
Glenn, I'm sorry.
Things are starting to go. Good.
Glenn, go ahead, I'm sorry.
He's boring.
You, you are, you are an I? All right. When do you find on? It was unanimous.
Uh, we're hoping to open by November.
Good. Perfect. Cold weather.
That's all right.
Warm in there.
Yeah.
Cold air and warm heat, right?
That'll get my, my brothers back into town once in a while, you know?
How long does it take to, from the time you start a batch?
It's about two weeks.
Two weeks? So it's not a huge turn, huh?
It depends on the, on the level. The higher the, the longer it's gonna.
Take your time. Come down the paper here. That's why that works. Joe, you gotta hold this one for me, cause I'm signing it too, right, boy?
Yeah, you gotta get Glenn on that.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to go visit Glenn.
You might go visit.
Do you have all your stuff in for this? Or you have to meet with Joe?
Yeah, no, so we're, I think we're good. He, uh, the brewery did give me the business plan, financials. Um, I got some information from Phil about the permitting. I think we have a very.
You only permit you had that, but just change of use, correct?
Put it down.
Yeah, that's not. But S U, S U only you had that or assigned, but. You didn't have, have one for the upstairs. Right? Cause that was always the environment, right? Didn't need it all fixed in downstairs. Where'd you end up with the third floor, twenty five years of that area?
Nothing to store it right now.
Scotch Hill? Like the road?
I got the, the electrical problem fixed underneath the stairs. Didn't know about that, so anyway, okay.
You don't want to know?
That's cool.
I don't know.
So nice, nice.
At least, at least you got your visitors out here, right? I remember you telling us about the visiting.
Nice, bright spot.
Well, anyways, I hope everything goes good and I hope you guys get open and get operating. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your support.
Good luck.
I'd like to see something in the building.
Yeah.
I mean, when we owned it, we had it for a while. I'll, I'll put the mirror and I'll put this, you know, the counter and stuff that's in there and all that.
Everyone has stories to tell about that.
It was a dairy barn.
It's been a lot of things.
It's been a lot of things.
Since, uh, eighteen ninety three.
Yeah.
I wasn't around that. You sure? No, I don't think so. You, you forget, you know? Cool. Well, good luck.
Good luck. Thanks.
Thanks for your patience.
Are, are the old mirrors and stuff still there?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's part of, that's part of the whole thing.
Well, the, the back bar, it's not enough there, but.
That's one, that's. I think we, well, we, something else, I think my wife told you about the bulbs and the lights and the mirrors, yeah.
Yes.
That's quite a story.
You know, I think another thing that we'll just mention real quick is that the wall that's behind that back bar that's heated into the property that everyone remembers, um, had this funky cement on it.
Yeah, spackle.
Well, we chipped everything that off to expose the original.
Oh, wow, should be nice.
So we're doing a restoration.
I'll, I'll come back in, in. An historic preservation.
Wow. So you find, you should be able to apply for grant money for that, for historical preservation as well. Should look into that, that old building. Good luck.
Some of the history probably upshifts. I like that little peephole, like, a little peephole in the window.
Oh, I've got a plant down there, and it's attached to my son, so.
Thanks, Glenn.
All right, thanks, guys.
Can we adopt, please?
All right. Road and Bridge Standards.
Yep. So the, the state has revamped their road and bridge standards. Uh, like I told Sam earlier, this is saying that if we do construction on our roads, we'll do it right. Not, not that we have to do it today, um, and this, I guess that's the crux of it, we're, we're telling the state we're gonna do it correctly.
But the state doesn't.
But like.
Unfunded mandate. We do, we do this, we do do this every year.
So what do you need from us?
I, I just need a motion saying that you adopt Vermont Road and Bridge Standards and then sign them.
That's what I said. For our motion. You get that, Claire?
I got it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Glenn got in the, aye.
He got an aye in there.
The only late question I have is, did, uh, West Street meet the standards?
Hmm?
It would have met the standard.
I'm happy with it.
West Street turned out really well. And it was under budget.
I'm not saying I'm not happy, but I just wondered.
That's why I asked, looking at the shoulders on it, but it's.
Even the, the section I dug up, it would meet this.
Would meet this one, okay.
Sam, I looked at that Superman over it.
That's amazing. I just wondered if there was anything weird.
Nice job. They did, they did a good job.
I've only been down through there a month.
Looks good, and then once, once the, all the, um, shoulders get in. I think it just needs cleaning up. Be nice. They did a good job, extensions on the handles.
Yep.
Yeah.
Came out good.
Um, parking lot stuff, any comments?
Well, we got rid of one of them.
Yeah.
I got one to ask them. The smoking ordinance for vaping, and you have any information you wanna give us on that?
I think if you just handle any other ordinance.
Would you just make it for town property or townwide, or?
Um, I think.
I don't think you can do it.
There must be a little.
Just be, um, similar to cigarettes, so following your cigarette policies for public areas.
What's the state, uh?
You're not gonna, right, don't create a new one, steal the state policy, right?
I'm gonna see. They're just, they're, they're just getting one in, aren't they?
I, I, not even where I'm.
Yeah, I think. They, they have a ninety percent sales tax on, on buying of big. I don't think they've got any regulations on where they can use them, correct? Ninety percent. I haven't seen that.
They're moving to, um, similar to anywhere like tobacco product.
Yeah.
They're gonna follow the same guy.
Probably no ones and stuff like that, I guess.
So. Yeah, I have one more quick question for Bill. Could you, there's a lot of trucks coming down Fourth Street, or Second Street.
Second Street?
Fourth Street, I'm sorry, Fourth Street. Um, there's a truck comes down through every morning, with four cars on it, or five cars on it. And they go back and forth, usually every morning by eight o'clock, they're done, and there's been, uh, a bunch of dump trucks running. I know some might be going through Apple Tree, but some are going straight through, and it's supposed to be a.
Taxed off, group tax right now.
It's supposed to be, uh, what is, that's twenty-four thousand, yeah, right.
We've had, we've had it run right through West Street, right into New York State.
Yeah, and that's another one I wanted to hit, West Street, when, uh, D and B is set up.
Well, they were on, they were on the corner down on Gulf Lane Road and, uh, that area there.
They usually watch. There's usually a guy. They don't really like you going around the weigh station.
Don't wanna mess up our good road anymore, Sam.
Driven all the back roads, so it wouldn't get wasted.
Smash Fourth Street or anything. Geez, I can't take it anymore.
Anything else on here that's striking anybody, sale of Route Thirty is re, regoing?
That would be next meeting, right?
Yeah, I actually, before this meeting, I, I let, uh, a couple of guys who were interested in to take.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah. They seem really interested in the property.
I think they're related.
They were up on top.
They were related, aren't they?
They did, yeah, I think so. But they were, they were just coming down from up on top.
Okay. I think some of those tires might almost be antique, so.
I don't think there's any cars up there, too.
No, there's tires.
Tires, maybe, I see cars up there.
No, tires, I was saying. All right, we'll move on then.
Well, I don't think there's any cars up there.
The, uh, furniture.
And, uh, listen, that little broad, Barney, not much.
Uh, board roundtable. Glenn, you got anything?
Uh, Jeff, uh, the newest portable restroom we got, and the rec center, I was down there today, and I noticed we're still not locked up, right? I'm wondering what's, what's standing there.
The water's locked up, tower's locked up, uh, sewer, I haven't got to yet. It's usable. They can use it. There's a fifty-gallon tank in there, so they can use it.
Have you checked out the movable parts, uh, moving it, or?
Moving it?
I didn't, I didn't see the handicap ramp, though. Oh, awesome. Long.
We're gonna have it done, uh, next week, see it?
Yes. I had to order some stuff from, uh, the RV place for the sewer.
That's it.
I just gotta, I gotta make the time to do it.
It's okay, good.
It's my call, but it wasn't good.
And, and I only have one other, I knew at the last meeting you talked about fixing that person with a problem with the corners on the cemetery. That person seemed to believe there were multiple people that were having problems, and they were real upset, like, we're all okay, of course, and that, and that being.
As far as I know, Jim has got those all in, um, and everything is all set. I haven't heard any more about those.
Yeah, and I guess that's just that one way, but just get this roadside home, I know we were going out looking for, see if we, if we're having trouble finding some, some contract?
I, I can't find anybody that, that, everybody's booked up. The only one that, that, um, might be able to help us is Cassidy, so hopefully by middle of next month, they might be able to, if they got their roads done.
Yeah, okay. Better get back, won't annoy.
Okay. Thanks, Glenn. What's the rumors, though? I keep getting the rumors, and the guy that's in one of the buildings down there says that Nelson has permits to put apartments in storefronts.
I don't think so. I'll check and see on the board, but I don't think that's gone through yet. Oh, wait, no, it did go through. Nelson did get one permit. That was a while back, though. Yeah, he got one permit to put, uh.
One of the buildings, one of these guys that went into, when he went in there, he had to take all of the tape off the floor because he already had it set up to put two apartments in.
It should have been one apartment on the ground floor.
Looks like good. No, this is separate. This is, they've got a meeting tomorrow, planning commission's gonna meet tomorrow night.
They do. Now, the, the only one I know of is that, uh, where the mailboxes are on that one storefront, the back of that was supposed to be.
Someone was told if he moved out, that he had a permit to put apartments in.
So, no.
It stirred quite up. We, we wanna, we gotta do something about ordinance.
Or change the zoning, it, it's a.
Or zoning, whatever we have to do.
You can't park anymore cars over back, and plus, healthier now.
We can't do any more.
We can't have.
People pre-parking either, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, that person's been long set, that's a problem.
But we can't, we, whatever we have to do to, to get to the point where we're not, we're not putting apartments in storefronts on Main Street, I mean, the, the next thing will look like, you know, northern New York towns, unnamed.
And as much effort as this board has put into creating a, a more diverse, like, robust economy down there, this is.
I guess.
It, it, it's another nail in the downtown coffin, is what it is.
My problem is, we're spending all this money for revitalization. We spend all money for grants and for studies. Well, what's the sense of doing all this if somebody opened a park? It's not gonna help us a bit, and we have no businesses coming.
And you aren't gonna have a chance.
Well, I wish there was something that we could do, or there was grant money that would help subsidize, subsidize rent? So people can get started, you know what I'm saying? I mean.
So I think that's what that grant was for, some of that stuff, right? Or do they have to match that in kind?
It's, it's in kind, and it's for, like, refurbishment, it's, I don't think it's.
But actually, somebody gets started, see if there's a grant, anyway, I'm looking, see if there's something like that. That we could advertise, where if somebody is trying to move in down here, and the rent is higher than they could afford, at least, you know, at least there'd be a starter for it, you know? What's, uh, what's the, what's the July thirtieth look like for, uh, for agenda so far? I mean, I just think maybe we get the planning commission in here to talk about zoning changes.
Um, just, like, you know, we, so far it's stacked pretty deep, but, I mean. We added, we added three things today.
I know there's a lot of people who want to meet tomorrow night. That's what I, and maybe they can start them, you know, maybe somebody can get a plan started on doing something. Well. If you get enough people in there tomorrow night, they, they maybe can get us, and then they could come and present something to us.
Sound like yourself.
I know the planning. I, I know the planning commission sent a, uh, survey out to property owners, asking them, do you want first-floor apartments? And it came back, the majority said, no, we don't want that. So I know there is a group that has gathered up, and they're very adamant that they don't wanna see first-floor apartments downtown. I don't think anybody wants to see that.
I mean, it was, we made a mistake of a few years ago, letting offices, you know? Yeah, business office, that was just. We need, we need retail space there.
Right.
Yeah.
Business.
At least the business office was.
Okay, look at. That's where the elevator. Yeah, elite, yeah.
You know what I mean?
At least the elevator, if we had an elevator, well, we're getting off something, anyway. We had an elevator.
I'd like that for now, the rest will be personal.
John?
Uh, I have one thing. I got a whole, uh, Brian Sanderson, the one in E O T, Office Amendment, or not. And I talked to him about using grindings for, I mean, the base of our salt shed, sand shed. And stuff like, oh, hell, that's the perfect use for us, so there's no regulations on that. As long as it's being used for that type of thing, there's no regulations on it.
So it's not, it's not, has this waste?
No, not for that use.
For that, but I can't, I can't give it, I can't give it to the public.
You can't give it to who?
If it's public.
I think.
If they're using it on a public highway, you could.
Yeah, but I can't, like, Jeff can't come down and get it on the, Bob can't come.
I could.
I think, I think Jay could.
You gotta hold it over there.
What I'm saying is, is.
What?
When it comes off that belt.
Yeah.
It's hazardous waste. Until I come, until I process it, and I run it through a stream.
Then it's not.
Then it's not.
Okay.
Well, we should probably run it through a stream.
It's like kind of a gray area.
I've already talked, I've already talked to, to, uh.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Try it round.
He'll run us a stream for two days.
Run it through? It's good, it makes nice stuff once it's been screened.
Oh, yeah. We can get the hay cut up there, we can get to work on that, Bob. Just a little dig there, you know?
We're trying, John, we're really trying.
I, 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 unless we got a big enough canopy to put over it to keep the hay dry.
Yes, we're in for a pretty good one tonight, right?
Oh, yes. So, yeah, I'm good, and that's all I have, Bob.
Sure.
I just said.
Cause I don't think, if the town moves it, it's not considered.
What, if you screened it anyway, Sam, it'll be.
But as far as the public, how the young, right, that might be another matter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've ever tried to give it away, and if somebody asks, I don't know how to.
It's heavy, anyway, and all that.
I had a couple of people ask me about our bid opening policy and just, there are some questions about transparency and whether we should open bids in, in the meeting. So like, especially like Thirty South.
We can open it in the meeting.
But what we've, what we've done in the past is we've kinda delegated that and let Joe do it earlier, so we can be prepared with our bids.
And then he shows us on paper, right?
But there are some people saying, you know, we'd like to see that process, we'd like to see them actually open. And I thought, I'd bring it up.
I don't have a problem with the way we're doing it, but if we've got people.
As long as we're, yeah, if somebody wants to see it, they're there.
And let's do it for the Thirty South Main Street, let's do it.
It's just, I don't have a problem either way, to be honest with you. I, I, as long as we're, it's.
Consistent.
It's consistent, and, and if somebody wants to see all the bids, they can, that's always there.
But it's one point out, that the reason we're doing it the way we are is so that the board can be prepared in the meeting.
Right, that's right.
It's not that we're trying to hide anything, it's just that it's easier to make sure that it's all apples to apples prior to the meeting, than trying to juggle that all around here.
Yes.
But.
I agree.
If we're gonna open them in a meeting, we should just have a bid opening and then award at another meeting. Because there's no way that you can do all the comparison in the time that we have.
Yeah, well, yeah, just like, we get a paving bid, you gotta go through and see, make sure it's apples to apples, near the mouth. And, I mean, you can get a bid for almost nothing, and, and not, if you want three inches of mix and somebody bidding two.
That's right.
It's quite a difference in the bid.
Oh, boy, I guess.
Just sorry, bring it up.
One other thing I had, cause I just said, do we need a meeting notice for the rescue squad if we go to a, a meeting?
If we all go.
We all go?
Maybe. Probably not.
No, but, I mean, we can, we can notice it, but you guys can be, you guys can be in the same space.
Just don't surprise each other.
Yeah, you just can't talk.
You're not making a decision.
No, right, we won't.
It's not our meeting.
Right, that's, that's why I, why I asked, I just wanted to.
Good, good.
We just happened to want to go to dinner at the rescue.
When, when, I don't remember that, though.
I think it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, four-thirty.
But we gotta all try to figure out where it actually is.
Yeah, rescue squad, I hope. Well, let's find out.
Let me know, so I can follow up.
Four-thirty?
Yeah.
I mean, what, what really is the.
Since I was delegate.
That's what I was told.
I, I think it's just finding people.
I think, I think that's.
People, the places where people are paying.
Well, that's one thing.
And it's all. They got into a death spiral, they didn't have, they didn't have enough people to work. So the money was there, so you need the money, you need the people to work to make the money, you need the money to feed the people.
I think, I think you'd love this management, although I think the people that are working there, they're trying their best, and they're, they're getting.
They've got despair.
Kinda, I just think it's.
The other lady, the lady called, handled six dollars.
Yeah, unfortunately, I called the other day, her hospital, our, uh, schemes are having to be right here, so they.
Just one. I was my west block, my.
There's a lot of.
Block wasn't there, so I took her.
A lot of people in this town feel ownership to that rescue squad because they.
Donated their years.
They started it, you know, and they used to fund it with chicken dinners, for God's sake.
We did that, Bob.
I know, I know that.
Harvest dinner every October.
I remember.
Half a chicken, a peach, rice, potatoes, vegetables, squash.
I guess that's.
Yeah, John cooked every bit of it.
I guess that's the part that gets me, though, is if they'd been a little more transparent about the problems, we could have had solutions.
Right.
They just had to ask, I mean.
At least worked on it, you know?
In town.
Everybody, everybody gets comfortable with what they have, until they don't have it, and that's, that's what we've done, everybody's done. All right, you got anything else?
No, I'm not. Just my. I mean, you.
You're gonna get a charter for the, for the rescue squad and, uh, fund balance report, and, um, how far are we gonna pursue somebody who's got a few chickens on their lawn?
how far are we gonna pursue somebody who's got a few chickens on their lawn?
You can't clear it.
Yes, there is.
Zoning ordinance, you have to have 25 acres.
There's a zoning, no, you, no...
One acre to have 25 chickens, go on.
Is that a zoning ordinance?
It's a zoning.
How many chickens does he have?
I, I really don't think we should waste any time on that.
It's funny you say that, because we did have a, a case where somebody put a chicken coop right next to somebody's swimming pool.
No, the chicken coop's a building, no?
You know, full common sense.
Yeah, we did, we just, did just pay somebody.
I could have, I could have got that problem solved quick.
Well, yeah, I would, at some point in time where they're gonna have to prosecute, I would, I would vote against that.
That's right, Bob, you'll have to receive chickens.
Just so that Phil, Phil understands.
I'm gonna start selling free chickens.
They're eating chicks.
Yes!
No, those are guineas.
Okay, yes, well, guineas, chick, guinea hen will really eat the chicks. All right, that's not like a, you've got some financials?
Fifty, checkbook is $58,050.26, which seems kind of low.
Fifty, or fifty?
Fifty-eight, oh, five-oh, point-two-six.
Oh, five-oh.
Twenty-six.
Point-two-six.
It's gonna be hard to pay payroll and...
I think they're out of that, just so you know. Motion to pay the payroll warrant, $34,717.49.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, $293,529.48. And there are some from a previous year in that, or something, there was a sticky in there.
Yeah, that's two years, about the end of last year.
There's, oh, the allocations, $210,000, that's allocation.
Right. Well...
Which is reserves, and...
I didn't, is it just listed as allocations, does that mean...
Is there a second?
There's not gonna... Okay. Does that mean that they're gonna pay the rescue squad, because they really shouldn't?
We're, we're holding on to that, that, we talked about that a couple weeks ago, we're holding it, to put it on pause.
Everybody understand, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, our executive session, you understand we only need A2?
Yes, you don't need both things, John, you just need to just make it for...
Motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications, maintenance is part of legal services to board.
I thought we were going for personnel.
It is personnel.
Well, personnel. Never mind what he said, just say personnel.
Personnel.
All opposed in favor?
Aye.